Okay, first, before we even start our meeting, I want to apologize on behalf of the board. Our soundboard that we would normally have to use with the microphones needed to be reformatted for the school play. And since that just ended this past weekend, they have not been reformatted so that we can use regular microphones tonight. So we're going to be sharing microphones. So if you cannot hear us, please just wave your hand and we'll know that that means you can hear us, okay? And since we thought, we knew there'd be a big crowd tonight, we thought it'd be a little too crowded and maybe unsafe in the smaller venue, so we moved into the auditorium. I'd like to call the April 25th, 2016 meeting to order. Adequate notice of this meeting was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon on January 5th, 2016 by posting the notice in the Fork River Post Office and the Ludonok Harbor Post Office and by filing a copy of the notice relating to county clerk as required by the open public meeting law. Will you please stand and salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the liberty of our citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, um, let me reread the adequate notice because there was correction. Adequate notice of this meeting was advertised in the Asbury Park Press on April 8th, 2016 and the Beacon on April 14th, 2016. Page two. Could I have a motion, please? Could I have a motion to approve the agenda meeting minutes from March 24th as amended? Two. Is there a second?
Sorry.
There's a lot of corrections here, so let's try and get this straight. Okay, that's up to page 22, board. And let's make a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting held on March 15th as corrected. Two. Thank you. You're welcome. Is there a minute? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schaletti, yes. Mr. Flock, yes. This is Sensa.
Yes.
This is Deirana. Yes. This is McAvoy. Yes. This is Downey.
Yes. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the agenda meeting held on March 25th, 2016 as amended? Sorry. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schaletti, yes. Mr. Flock, yes. This is Sensa.
Yes.
This is Deirana. Yes. This is McAvoy. Yes. This is Downey.
Yes, but I have a motion to approve the minutes of the appropriate attachments of the regular meeting held on March 21st, 2016 as amended. Two.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Schaletti, yes. Mr. Flock, yes. This is Sensa.
Yes.
This is Deirana. Yes. This is McAvoy.
Yes.
This is Downey.
Yes, but I have a motion to approve the minutes of the private session held on March 21st, 2016. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schaletti, yes. Mr. Flock, yes. This is Sensa.
Yes.
This is Deirana. Yes. This is McAvoy.
Yes.
This is Downey.
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to page 40. Could I have a motion, please, to approve payment of bills for April 2016 totaling Roll call, please.
Mr. Schaletti, yes. Mr. Flock, yes. This is Sensa.
Yes, on all bills except the following. Item 950730, 503400, 952905, 953089, 950374, 950330, 952788, 514230, 515175, 516775, 951133, 952568, 154600, 951390, 950642, 952991, 532250, 949597, 950597, 539350, 951137, 952494, 953087, 260527, 953013, and 546900, 952004, 952904, 952996, 951221, and the last one is 952787.
Let me flash out this sound. Did it work?
Roll call, Deirana? Yes. This is McAvoy.
Yes.
This is Downey.
Yes. Please resolve that the word of the Secretary of the Board of Education has reported the treasurer's school monies for February 2016, which are in agreement and accepted as submitted and attached to the main part of the minutes of this meeting. And I have a motion to approve the reported board secretary and treasurer's report for February 2016 as amended. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schaletti, yes. Mr. Flock, yes. This is Sensa.
Yes.
This is Deirana. Yes. This is McAvoy.
Yes.
This is Downey.
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Stein, do you have any requests?
No request for a private session at this point. There will be a clarification on whether or not we should be allowed to do that.
At this time, it's being representative. Who wants to go first? Okay, thank you.
Interact and Environmental Club would like to welcome students, parents, staff, and community members to participate May 21st at Veterans Park or donate to their team. The team name is Lion and Love and it can be found on the Berkeley Lacy relay webpage. The sophomores are still selling their language, their $30, see this packet if you're interested. Seniors will be auctioned off on April 28th and Rampus Senior will be held April 29th. Speedball, Foreman is May 23rd and 24th. The juniors have junior crews on May 13th and the senior goodbye is May 1st to the 20th. See this spreadsheet for information. The seniors are part on confessions and senior raffles. The SGA Executive Board held an amazing race. It was March 18th to the 24th. First place for the juniors and they made $1,204. Second place for the seniors, they made $722. Third place for the sophomores, $361. And fourth place was a freshman that made $120. We have school spirit every Friday until May 27th, um, and everyone has to wear a lacy year. The grade with the most participation during the eighth period will earn $5,000 from SGA. Elections for 2016 to 2017 school year is Friday, April 29th. May 2nd, the entire school will be introduced to their involvers. Mr. Lacy is on May 26th. Doors open at 5:30 PM and the show starts at 6:00 PM. $5 to watch. The contestants are senior boys and they need a formal suit, suit and tie.
Um, subhero award winner is very dedicated student Carly Bullock. Carly is enrolled in multiple breakers courses, earning excellent grades in all of her classes. She is not only successful in the classroom, Carly also excels in the golf course and in her extracurricular activities. Within the walls of LTHS, she is the captain of the Lincoln's Golf Team and the president of the Environmental Club. She is also a member of Interact and Biology Club and is a writer for the Y of Spain. Carly belongs to the Future Teachers of America where she's learning about the education field and hopes of becoming an elementary teacher. During her free time, she volunteers for Lacy Food Bank, Popcorn Park Zoo, and Millie for Life and even dedicates her time to help the MH kids in the elementary schools. And if that is not enough, Carly is also an MS volunteer feeding and providing for all participants at events. Due to her success in and out of the classroom, this student has recently been admitted into the NHS. Carly is a very extraordinary girl. She's always friendly to others and never has one mean thing to say to another. She gives all, she gives her all in all what she does. Carly is the type of person that people strive to be. She is hardworking, kind, and extremely deserving of this award. For this reasons, April's subhero is Carly Bullock.
Can I just have a round of applause for her parents? Okay, at this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to support attended Dr. Anthony.
Thank you, Mrs. Downey. I'm going to go a little bit out of order and you'll see on your agenda that there are a few items in my section, but I'd first like to draw your attention to page 44 where the board will be taking action tonight to accept the donations by our very generous community members. So if you would allow me, I would like to just acknowledge all of the people who have so generously given to our district. We thank the Cedar Creek donation family for games, 15, the amount of $120. We'd also like to recognize Michael Pierce and his brother Edward Andrew Pierce, who were illustrators and authors for the book PB and J. They donated their books to our media centers and so they donated two to Cedar Creek. Fork River, Mrs. Deanne Staudt, Children's Games, 80, the amount of $150. Mrs. Darlene Vansel, children's books, the amount of $300 and they're at 80. Again, Michael Pierce and his brother Edward Pierce, children's books, the amount of $9. At Ludonok Harbor, the DePaula family, recess field bases, one set for $50. Mr. Tim Snover, Sage Backdrop, $400 from TLC Signs and Banner. Again, Mr. Michael Pierce and his brother Edward, two books to Ludonok Harbor, the amount of $18 at Mill Pond, the same one, the amount of $9. At the high school, Thompson Health and Sports Medicine for the MH class for Special Olympics, the amount of $250. The Fork River Tunin Club for the MH class of Special Olympics, $15. And the entire district from Allcoins Media and Jersey Manufacturers, insurance group, $250 per school, 100, sorry, $1,500. So the board will be taking action in just a little bit and so we are so grateful for the generosity of our community. I want to also draw your attention, as I've been doing here every month, to the incredibly talented artwork of our students. So Nate Zeller, grade 11, Samantha Herbert, grade 12, Premier Olek Lesquas, grade 10, Alexa Farrey, grade 10, and Patti Kirchner, a ninth grader, all cooperatively took a piece of our cover for the superintendent's report for April and I thank them. I also want to thank Joe Lazarus and Lauren Prosser. Joe's in 12th grade and Lauren's in 10th grade. So this month, the high school adopted our two covers and their artwork is incredible and so I wanted to recognize them as well. So I hope you had an opportunity to pick up the superintendent's report and you're going to see all the incredible things that are happening in our schools. This has been an incredible month, the drama and artwork. I hope you had an opportunity to attend the high school play, I am hearing that it was just incredible. I also want to recognize a few highlights. Of course, every time I see a student's name and a principal highlighting the things that are happening in schools, it's incredible, but I want to particularly call out to our Ludonok Harbor School because they created a second video called Read Lock and I think it is on our website. And if it is not, I'll make sure it's up there tomorrow, so I would love for you to see the incredible towns of Ludonok Harbor with what our children are doing there. It's incredible. I also want to recognize the Students of the Month at Middle School, Kendall Boyle in 7th grade. And Kendall is recognized just quite eloquently as just an extremely hardworking student who gives her full attention to everything, so she is absolutely committed. I want to recognize Tosh Roserick and he is recognized for his dedication on field as a dedicated soccer player in addition to all the impressive things that have been written about him. I hope you'll join me regarding about Laura DeAngelis. And Laura's an 8th grade student and she is involved in our band program and marching band program, so we hope that you stay involved with that. And Austin Calipuri, who's also 8th grade. And I highlight that I'd like to share a few about Austin, he's an incredible role model. So I think that, I think that concludes some of the things that I wanted to share. I know that the board will all make mention of our Students of the Month and I know that Mr. Hantu is at the front of the stage over to your left and my right. And I want to share with you that this is going to be Mr. Hantu's last board meeting where he is going to be recognizing Students of the Month. And so one of the things that he did was create a twist because prior to Mr. Hantu coming, we would have our students do something a little different, but it was his grandchild and the staff to create the video montage. That is the most delightful thing that I know that you've seen. So, Mr. Hantu, not only will your legacy live on with how you recognize your students, I can tell you that your positive spirit and your energy and all that you've contributed in Lacy High School has transformed it into the school that it is today. I know that we're going to be reserving some comments for another board meeting, Mr. Hantu, but tonight I just wanted to recognize and ask you to give me your supportive round of applause as we say goodbye to Mr. Hantu's last student. So, the students that he's going to be recognizing tonight, this is it. Mr. Hantu.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you for the applause. This is a good thing and we say the best, thank you for last. I finally got the hang of this. It is finally here with the hat, but the channel just made, the print board and stuff. Okay, if I may, please invite the Board of Education to come down and join us and then I'll be calling Students of the Month temporarily. My first selection to be invited, Student of the Month for April, Jamie Harlan. Hello, Mr. Hantu, welcome to the Senior Spotlight April or meet our outstanding Seniors of the Month. Joining me now is Jamie Harlan. Jamie's ranked in the top four percent of her class with a 4.5, folks, that's a 4.5 GPA. She's a two-sport Golden Ball winner and is an active member of the school community. Can you tell us about how you balance schoolwork, extracurricular activities, and athletics?
Well, ever since I was little, like Mill Pond and like middle school, I've always studied both sports and outside sports and everything. And now that I'm older, I've started a part-time job, so I just think it's prepared me for college. So if I just keep up like the high pace, I should be good for college and for the future.
It's great to stay active. You've been doing extremely well.
Thank you.
Can you tell us about some of the activities you're involved with here at the high school?
Yeah, I do here as a co-git and last year I did Interact Club and also a part of Edding Jess. So I just really feel like getting involved with the community is a really good thing and it kind of like prepares me for later on in life, so I just really like being involved.
That's great. Now, I gotta do a little sidetrack here. You have beautiful colored hair.
Thank you.
It's all natural, correct?
Correct.
I used to have the same colored hair.
Thank you.
We think you can still see it. Of course you can still see it.
It's there.
Okay, I want to let you outside of school.
Well, I have a job and I was doing sports outside of school still, even though I'm in high school. So I just kind of like staying busy and, you know, just stay busy.
All right, the toughest question we ask seniors. It's getting to the end of the year, so hopefully you got the answer to this one. What are your future plans?
I'm going to Stockton University in the fall and I'm going to be majoring in health science and then I'm going to become a physician assistant.
Excellent, so you're going from a Lion to an Osprey.
Of course.
You'll be successful there. Congratulations, Jamie, on your selection of Senior of the Month. We'll be right back with Lucas Pogona.
Um, here at the entire Board of Education, I'd like to present this plaque to you. Senior of the Month, April 2016, acknowledged by the undersigned for her unsurpassed achievements. Congratulations. Good luck at Stockton, it's a beautiful college, I'm sure you're going to do well. Congratulations.
And if I may, recognize Jamie's family, the Harlan family. Would you please stand up? I'm sorry that we get embarrassed. All right, our next Student of the Month is Lucas Pogona. Lucas cannot be here tonight, he's at a baseball game and hopefully brings home a victory for our Lions, so we're going to roll his tape and then I will just embarrass his mom in a moment, so please stand by, mom. Welcome back to Senior Spotlight April. Now joining us is Senior of the Month, Lucas Pogona. Lucas has been on the honor roll for all four years of the high school and has earned four varsity letters, football and baseball. Can you tell us about your athletic career at Lacy?
Well, I played football my first three years of high school. I got hurt my two years out of the three and then I just moved on to baseball and been playing ever since I was a little kid and just playing baseball.
So I guess you work out and you live weight some short, correct?
Yeah.
I know I have the same kind of physique that you're sporting right now, so I'm not going to really get us confused. You also like to write for the school newspaper and you're involved in the fishing club, which is a favorite of this TV studio, Mr. Merman. Can you tell us about your involvement with those activities?
Well, newspaper, I started all because of my teacher, Mr. Sullivan. He got me involved because we were doing sports writing in his class and I wanted to try it out on the actual newspaper level, so I went there a couple times for a couple papers. And the fishing club, I just joined this year. I haven't gone on a trip yet, but I'm looking to go on a couple trips in the end of the year and hopefully catch a couple fish.
Hopefully land some big ones.
Yeah.
What do you like to do outside of school?
Outside of school, I like to just hang out with my family, maybe work on my car a little bit and play sports outside of school also.
Oh, what kind of car do you drive?
I drive a Volkswagen Jetta.
Nothing wrong with a VW, very good. And what are your future plans?
My future plans are gonna go to college. My top two choices are either Montclair or Stockton. OCC is always an option, but it was my two.
All right, okay, congratulations. Good luck with your selection of colleges. Congratulations, Lucas, on your selection of Senior of the Month.
Thank you.
We'll be right back with the vocational Senior of the Month, Christina Corliss. And if you have mentioned Lucas's candy, please stand so we can give you applause. I know you're here. All right, our next Student of the Month for vocational schools is Christina Corliss. Christina, please calm down. And while Christina's coming down, if we can have Christina's family please wave to us. How about a round of applause for her student. Welcome back to Senior Spotlight April or meet our outstanding Seniors of the Month. Joining me now is Vocational Senior of the Month, Christina Corliss. Christina is an outstanding student both at the high school and her vocational program, earning a 4.25, that's a 4.25. We have some great GPAs today. Can you tell us about what you do at the program of vocational school and what made you get interested in that program?
Um, I take dental services at the vocational program and I don't know, it just kind of sparked an interest in me. I want to be a hygienist, so I thought that taking that program would, you know, set me up for hygiene a little bit more and getting more knowledge about it.
All right, so general, dental hygienists, what's your favorite type of toothpaste?
Colgate, total plus whitening.
I think you're going to have to try and give me credit for that. Can you tell us about your involvement in the school and community activities?
Um, outside of school, I volunteer a lot for my church during co-dives and Thanksgiving dinners and it's nice to like help what people need, feels good.
That's, that's very excellent. Go ahead and keep going.
And inside of school, I'm on my 30th managing the boys varsity lacrosse, so I don't know, I enjoy that, keeps me involved a little bit.
So very interesting, very busy outside of school. What else do you like to do like in your spare time outside of school?
Well, when I'm not working, I like to, I don't know, lounge around, hang out with some friends, watch movies, yeah.
Sounds like a good time. What are your future plans?
Right now, I plan on going to OCC for, I don't know, a year maybe for my pregraps and then transferring to either Brookdale or Brooklyn for the hygiene program.
That's excellent. I want to use my Colgate, I'll give you credit for that. Congratulations, Christina, on your selection of Senior of the Month. Thank you for joining Senior Spotlight and thank you for joining Senior Spotlight with us each month and for this month, April. I'll either see you on the Topzer or rowing my boat or on the beach. Take care, Lacy Township. Thank you.
Christina, on behalf of the board, we'd like to present this plaque to you as Vocational Senior of the Month and I hope you're, you're going to be a kind and gentle hygienist because I am petrified as a devil, so let me know where you go and I will follow you. Congratulations, sweetie. Good job.
All right, thank you, Dr. Anthony, Board of Education, for allowing us to produce and show you our Students of the Month. I'd say see you next month, but probably won't. All right, good luck and good luck to the students and the families of Lacy Township. Thank you.
So like Mr. Hantu, I'm going to have some pretty powerful and profound memories of Lacy Township and one of them that will always stand out and I will never forget is my experiences over at Mill Pond School. And Mill Pond School has taken recognition of our veterans to a whole nother level. And I've had the extreme pleasure and the honor to be in the audience every year that they have really stepped up to recognize the veterans in our school community and have really treated them as heroes. And so tonight, we were asked if we would turn over our board meeting for just a little bit in a reverse way to recognize the students and step at Mill Pond. So it is my pleasure to introduce you Principal Docery, who is going to tell you a little bit more about our special guest this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Anthony. I would like to invite up here with me our Proud Pals Club advisors, Mrs. Subsy, Ms. Anzalone, Mrs. McPherson, as well as our Proud Pals Club's Executive President, Student Sarah Kuzan. I also see Sarah's parents sitting right over there. Thank you, just take a moment and wave to everyone. Like Dr. Anthony was saying, one of the absolute highlights of the school year for Mill Pond Elementary School is our Veterans Day Assembly. Our Proud Pals Club spends countless hours organizing this great assembly for our students in which we invite any family members that have served or are currently serving to come to our school to help commemorate the special day, learn about their service, and just help us recognize our veterans. Tonight, we have Mr. Snyder and Mr. Hanson of the Lacy Veterans Commission, as well as Lacy Township Committee Man, Mr. Kerlatola, here to recognize our Mill Pond Proud Pals Club for their ongoing efforts supporting the veterans. So at this time, I would like to invite them to join us on stage. for their ongoing efforts supporting the veterans. So at this time, I would like to invite them to join us on stage.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate that, as do all the veterans. It's amazing what's happened. Had myself, Kenny here behind me, a few of the other guys, Vietnam veterans. When, the story I always tell is when I was coming home from Vietnam, you know, we were shunned, booed, called names. The worst experience I think I had was, we just got out of the bush, we were landing in LA, all dressed up, Class A uniform, looking good, a little jungle junk and, you know, sporting. Well, you know what Marines do when they get out of here. So we're walking through the airport and on the balcony above, there was about three or four, back then we called them hippies. And they started pelting us with jelly donuts and actually the powder got all over our uniforms. So we ran them down and instructed them never to do that again. One was taken away, would've broken a leg. We were escorted to our plane by the police, put on and sent to New Jersey and told not to come back to California. So there's been a real turnaround in our veterans nowadays from there and we really, really deeply appreciate it. Especially what Proud Paws does for the veterans when they started the program. It's been five years now and it gets bigger and better each year. The veterans get up, the kids get up to and acknowledge their father, grandfather, neighbor, any veteran that they know. This year, we were honored to recognize one of the, Jason Williams. Jason, Jason's father was a 1984 graduate of Lacy Township High School. He went to Delaware University, graduated there, had a commission in the United States Air Force. And he flew C-130 cargo planes for the Air Force for 20 years. Somewhere along the line, he picked something up. When he got out, he passed away within six, seven months of being released. His death was attributed to, you know, service connected. And he was eligible for the New Jersey Distinguished Service Medal, which Kenny Hanson here had a connection out of Trent and we got it for him. We brought it in and did the presentation at the Assembly. And another nice part of it, we have another 2003, I believe, was graduate Brian Holt. Who, Brian graduated Lacy Township here, went on to Virginia Military Institute. After that, he took a commission in the United States Marine Corps, was an Afghanistan vet. So he came that day all dressed up in his marine dress blues and, you know, we pinned the medal on the little girl with a brother and mom there. And it was really an emotional moving and as some of the board members were there, right? And it was, it moved everybody. It was really nice. And this stuff went unrecognized for years. And it's nice that the Proud Paws, Bob Darty, the principal, I think Sue Gallagher got the program started about five years ago. Bob's carried it on and we just can't be thankful enough for what he's done for us. And hopefully it'll continue. If you get a chance, we'll announce it. We'll put it on TV. Next year, everybody's invited to come over. It's really a nice program. On behalf of the Veterans Commission, we'd like to present a plaque here. Think Bob this your first year as principal. I was in his office once and it's nothing to hang on the walls. So we thought we'd decorate him a little. It's a plaque with his name and the girls, the teachers, a Proud Paws book, and just a simple inscription of thank you from the Lacy Township. And we thank you.
I just wanna reiterate just something I see on the plaque here. Really need special recognition for Ms. Anzalone, Mrs. McPherson, Mrs. Subsy, and our students at the Proud Paws Club, just because of how much time and energy and effort they put into this assembly. And certainly your support each year, Mr. Snyder and all the other veterans. So we hope to keep on making it bigger and better each year and we thank you all for joining us tonight. Thank you.
So the next part of our evening tonight is for the, for me, as the superintendent, to present to you and formally to the Board of Education, the budget proposal tonight is not the budget hearing, but it's rather the opportunity for me to share what the budget looks like. And I know that many of you are here because you're interested, because you care, because you're worried. And there might be some other emotions too, because whatever you have felt, we have felt too. We have felt worried, we have felt anger, we have felt pain, we have felt anxiety. All of the things that you may have felt over the past few days and a few weeks as this budget comes into play. I can tell you that the predictions for this particular budget development for 1617 started back in the fall when I was having conversations about what this budget might look like. And we knew then that we were going to really have to take a different look and a different approach. And unfortunately, I need to share with you that not only is this budget one of the most challenging ones of my tenure here. I forecast for you that it is not going to get any easier for this Board of Education in the years to come. The district is really strangled by certain non-negotiables, things that there is no opportunity to control. And some of that happens to do with healthcare costs. Some of it is a 2% cap on our levy with additional rising costs for the services that we provide our students. So things are going to continue to get tighter and over the years, we have had an opportunity to provide extraordinary initiatives to this district in the area of technology, in the area of educational writing for our curriculum, for supplies and materials, for even not only the infrastructure and technology, but also the classroom technology. And so every year, we've tried to create a focus. And so this year, we are focusing on a very little discretionary money that we do have to provide our continuum for our literacy program, but it's really important for you to understand what in totality this budget looks like. And so I can't underscore for you enough that this was the most challenging budget yet. And the other thing that I might wanna add at this point is that no one is happy about this. And I am certain that I can speak for every member of the Board of Education, that they are not happy. And they have challenged this administration to do whatever it could to save as many of the people's positions as we possibly could. And we did the very best that we could. And this Board of Education has done the very, very best that it could. There is no else to, there is nowhere else to go. So we wanna provide the opportunity tonight, after I do the presentation, and it will be brief. I'm just going to be giving you some of the numbers in the budget. And I know that there is a question and a comment period that every board meeting has in New Jersey. So the board will be interested in your comments. But if you feel like you want a different setting by tomorrow morning, the presentation will be on our website. And there will be an opportunity for you to write in, either both anonymously, anonymity, or with your name so that the board can hear the concerns in writing. So that's another option for you that you can use tomorrow. So this slide is one that I've shown you over and over again every year. I do it intentionally and with stability so that you know that our budget process does not change. It begins in December and January when every school is starting to put together their budget plans, with every department starting to identify the financial blueprint of what their goals look like and the aspirations that they have for the upcoming year. In January and February, it comes to the district and central office level. I can tell you that we did change it this year a little bit. We knew that there were pretty difficult decisions that had to be made. And I'm going to give you a sense of how much your school leaders want to invest in their schools. So every school principal and every department leader has an opportunity to put in everything that they aspire for their budget. And at that point, it was almost $6 million of desires and wishes and wants and needs. $6 million that we could not get into this budget. So we had to cut not only from the aspirational budget, but we had to get it down to where it needed to be. And so this January and February looked very different like it had ever looked before because we had to take some really deep gashes at the goals that were established by our school leaders. And then in February and March, it goes to the Board of Education Committee level, particularly Finance Committee starts to talk about the budget. And we start to make left turns and right turns and U-turns. We can do this, we can't do this. This is acceptable, this is not acceptable. And then in April and May, the full board finally has an opportunity where almost every board member at this point sort of has an understanding and can finish each other's sentences. They sort of know what's in there. They've come to agreement and in some cases, real worst consensus because not every board member was able to get everything that they wanted in this budget. So we had to establish some priorities. So in this particular year, I should say fiscal year 201617, actually, our budget priorities were this. To support and when possible, enhance the instructional programs. To maximize efficiencies in personnel, particularly in personnel management. To maintain our facilities and our community services and to increase our surplus and our reserves. And you know that we do not have any surplus and reserves. And we do have some aging facility needs that we need to start to plan for now. This budget also provides for the security personnel that we've had in the past, although we've had to scale back just a little. This plan also acknowledges that in that needs of wants that I talked about earlier, that courtesy busing that the district currently provides to many students will start to be on a plan of decreasing courtesy busing and increasing expanded walking routes over the next few years. And so we're not planning on anything right now for September, but there will be a phased-in plan to expand walking routes. And then lastly, a recreational and nonprofit facility access. This budget maintains open access for our community to use our facilities and there is no change in that. In the personnel area, this budget does necessitate a need to reduce our certified staff by 18.5 teachers. And I'll give you that breakdown now so that you know where the effects will happen. So at the high school, we are looking to reduce our staff in this budget by eight teaching positions. At the middle school, two teaching positions. At Cedar Creek, two teaching positions. At Noka Harbor, three teaching positions. And at Fork and River, 3.5 teaching positions. This budget is built to reduce two full-time administrators, one dean of discipline, and a reduction of three health aides. And this might look familiar to you because we struggled with last year. But this is back on in this budget so that we would maintain half point five. A reduction of two custodians and the reduction of one school safety officer. In the area of support for personnel changes and instructional programs, this budget does seek to maintain average class sizes in K4. So in some cases, we may move from a small class size to an average class size. Our larger class sizes are mainly in grades five and six. There is a continued commitment to excellence in regular and special education instructional programs, particularly for K-12. And we do not have any cuts in the area of special education, not in instructional aids, not in special education staff or child study team members. And as I mentioned earlier, there is core to replace the elementary literacy program. As you know, that our program is from 2008, I believe. It is not aligned to the Common Core and no longer meets the standards of which our students need to compete with. So our budget plan is as this. On the revenue side, and again, this will be, if you can't see in the back, this presentation will be available on our website tomorrow morning with an option for you to write in with a link of questions or comments. So I know you can't see this, but I will read the numbers so you'll bear with me. And so I am going to just read the proposed 201617. So our local tax levy will be $44,747,538. And that is a change of $2.3 million with a percent change of 5.45%. So I just wanna talk about this a little bit so that you know we have a 2% cap on our tax levy. So you're saying to yourself, that's not 2%, that's 5.45%. That is because this Board of Education has had to take a deliberate action to exhaust every opportunity in banked cap and its health benefits cap waiver. There is no additional way we can achieve getting any more revenue in this budget. So I know in years past, I've had conversations with union leadership about the conversation about banked cap. But I can tell you that this year, the board at this point has approved a tentative budget and will approve a budget most likely next week, which exhausts the health benefits cap waiver as well as the banked cap. Our state aid is 1.6%, so the dollar change there is $340,000 approximately. So that is the increase that we receive from the state of New Jersey. So our budget and fund balance is a very different number than you've recognized in the past. So in the past, we've generally appropriated $1.7 million in surplus and fund balance. This year, that is not the case. And so there is the conflation of the issue that the district is dealing with. And that is competing resources for our health benefits costs as well as really almost flat state aid, as well as a need to budget our fund balance at much lower levels than we've had because we need to build up our reserves and because we just don't have it. Lastly, our miscellaneous revenues stayed the same. We're planning on that. A slight increase in our Medicaid, only $4,760. So our total proposed operating budget, or rather the revenue, would be $67,655,470 with a change, a dollar change, a little over $1.8 million. And the percent change there is 2.81%. So let's take a look now at the appropriation section. And here we are. So the slide is for comparative purposes again, just to give you a sense of where these numbers look. You can see a reduction in our proposed appropriations of almost $1 million. $902,000 a percent change decrease of 2.5% in tuition. You can see that there is a decrease in proposed tuition of $17,531, a 0.73% decrease. In administration, you can see our proposed appropriation is $1.87 million. And our change there is $106,000 with a percent change of a little over 5%. Our capital outlay also shows a decrease by $126,000, over 44%. Our operations is down, $6.2 million, over $6.3 million, and that's a 0.44% change. and that's a point four four percent change. You can see a slight increase in our transportation. And so this will be a continued area that the board will, over time, continue to look at because courtesy busing is not a mandated service for our students. So you'll see an increase there. In personnel, personnel covers benefits, workers' compensation, pension payments, as well as tuition reimbursements. So there's a percentage change there of sixteen point three one percent. And so our total operating budget is two point eight one percent of an increase over the prior year. So the cost to the average homeowner is, it will be approximately a hundred and twenty-nine dollars per year, or ten dollars and seventy-five percent, cents rather, per month. So in summary, for the 2016-17 budget, the total budget has increased one million, five hundred thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars with a two point one six percent increase. Our general fund has increased, one point eight million dollars with a general two point seven five percent increase. Our general fund tax levy has increased two point three million dollars approximately with a five point four five percent increase. And the total tax levy has increased two million dollars approximately with a five percent increase. And that does include the debt service, I know some of you track some of that. So I mentioned that we are here tonight. We know that the rumors are alarming. We know that the facts that are presented tonight will at least start to begin to allay some of those fears so that you can understand that we're not happy, we know you're not happy, this is not what we want. But this board and this administration has done everything that they can, and I can stand before you today and tell you that not everyone agrees and not everyone supports everything that's in this budget the way it is. But we've done our very best, our very best due diligence to continue to provide the services for our students. Some real difficult choices had to be made. But we want to hear your thoughts and your comments and your concerns. And the board will do that during public session when President Downey opens up for a public comment. And then I also do want to encourage you to provide outreach to my office tomorrow, either through electronic means, through email, or feel free to call me directly as well. Okay? Thank you. For your information under the superintendent's report, we include all of the monthly reports except for the security reports that are just provided to the Board of Education. And that concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Anthony. Thank you for the presentation. At this time, I'm going to open up the floor to the public. Please, if you want to speak, please raise your hand, I'll acknowledge you. Please state your name and address. And ladies and gentlemen, please, let's keep it civil. I know emotions are high for different reasons, for whatever you're here for. So just please remember to be as civil and polite as possible with each other. Okay, sir, you can start.
Hello, my name is... My name is John Romalia. I live at 309 Bayside East Parkway. And I'm here to talk about something completely different from the budget. There has been a rash of deaths from students that attended Lacy, the Will Pond School, the middle school, the high school. And death by heroin is rampant in our community. And if you've been following the reports, it's been reported that this is the eighteenth worst community in the state of New Jersey for heroin abuse. Okay? I personally have lost a son. Three people on my street were affected by heroin. Three kids that used to play in my backyard are dead today. One just died recently. None of them died in Lacy. Some died in Red Bank, another young man died in Long Branch, and another young man just died in Double Trench. So if I could just get some prepared questions out here that I have for you. Just give me one second, please. Recently, I attended a township meeting, which I asked very hard questions to the township. Spoke to the deputy mayor, the mayor, and all the council members, and looking for answers on how to address this problem, which is heroic. I mean, my son was introduced to heroin in Lacy's school system at the age of fifteen or sixteen. Okay? And that's the story that is ongoing. Now you see there, he died when he was twenty-one, all right? He graduated, but he already graduated also from this high school. And now other kids are dying later on. They made it a little bit longer than my son, Matthew, Charles, or Mac. So, you know, in addressing the town council, just recently, you know, I asked some questions about what can be done because being a person who deals with data points, statistics, metrics, outcomes, all the things that people in education are very familiar with. You know, I wanted to know how come you keep doing the same things and the outcomes just keep getting worse and worse and worse? It's getting worse, it's not getting better. And so, geez, I hope I can read this without my glasses. I'm getting old. The first question I have for you is, are you aware Lacy is the eighteenth worst community in the state of New Jersey for heroin abuse?
Yes.
Okay, that's a good answer, I like that. Okay. Do you know how many Lacy high school students have died because of heroin-related deaths?
Sir, I don't know that number exactly, but I can tell you that one is too many.
That's another good answer, but it's not good enough because it should be counted, it should be charted, it should be studied because...
So what you just said is exactly the issue because you just talked to us about people who have lost their lives outside of Lacy, and then they don't get counted in Lacy's count because we don't know. Do you see, exactly what you just said is exactly what we don't know.
That's why I'm bringing it to your attention, I understand.
So the nexus between Lacy and where someone loses their life because of a drug overdose, we might not get that statistic connected. I think you and I are saying the same exact thing.
Yeah, I just said it a lot short, yeah. But the problem can be identified. It's, you know, it's on all the high school websites, it's in social media. And believe it or not, the best place to find out how deep this problem runs is at the funerals. I recently attended the funeral of a twenty-eight-year-old boy I used to play catch with, take fishing, and my boat, play with my son. And he's gone, and at his funeral, right here in Lacy, I met many, many kids that knew my son, that came up to me, and they were in recovery, they talked about their friends that were like out of state, out of pocket, out of hand. And I don't believe you're looking for these statistics. I don't think, you know, you could give a study because it really would be very detrimental. Because when you choose a place to live, what's the first thing you choose? Where your kids want to go to school, right? Do you all agree with that? Okay. So let me just tell you this, if I knew today, you know, when I moved, when I had a choice, moving back from Virginia, from my high-paying job to go back to New Jersey, where to live, if I knew what I do now, I would not come to Lacy. I would not move into Lacy Township because of the problem. That's just the fact that it's going to reflect in your budget and your rateables in the end. Because just look at all the for sale signs on all the houses. People are leaving town. Families are being fractured, split up, cast in four winds. And I don't see anybody doing anything different about it. I know you're trying, and I want to applaud all the success stories that you've told here tonight. That was wonderful, that's great. But mine isn't a success story. Mine is a story of failure that started, you know, with, in middle school, manifested itself in high school, all right, and ended in death. In two thousand and seven, September seventeenth, two thousand and seven, my son committed suicide, he stood in front of a tree. Now, if that doesn't strike a chord in you to know that his addiction began in this town, I don't know what else I can say. And so I'll go on to my next point. I don't ask you to answer any of these questions now. What I would like to do is just ask some questions and have you take a month to think about them, and then tell me what you'd like to do because I'm very concerned about other young people dying. And so let me press on. What are you doing to measure the increase in heroin abuse in Lacy Township? What are you doing to measure the increase in heroin use in Lacy Township? How are you identifying the problem? And what are you doing about it? And this is probably the most, you know, my wife is a career teacher, right? So she's dealt with superintendents, board members, you know, she's retired now, it's all good, great pension, blah, 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 blah. I know what you're up against, you know, you got a tough job. And the board members, thankless job. Thank you for sitting in those chairs and trying to do the best you can, I appreciate that. But here's, I think, really one of the most important things you can do. It's bringing a union together between essentially you, the board, township, the police department, your staff, and I think most importantly, the parents, and then the children. Because really, when you need to begin educating the kids in a way that's not just talking heads, right? Because when you send somebody up there with a suit to a kid, you know, you look at what's happening right now in prosecutor's office in Ocean County, County C. You know, he's developing a program which addresses age group and gender. You know, these programs that he's trying to educate people with are specifically tailored to groups because it's different. There's no cookie cutter solution for this problem. And I know you're not living it, so you don't know, but believe me, you know, my wife and I, still married, God bless her, you know, and this usually ends up in the shatter of marriages and divorce. And we made it through, okay? But I don't think you really understand the problem, and I want you to begin studying it. And I want you to begin to come up with a formula that's not the same old, same old solution that doesn't work, doesn't work. What they're doing, believe me, I've thrown a lot of money at it, I've thrown, I've done everything a parent can usually do, and it ended up working. So I want you to begin looking at what you can do because you have, you have one of two things you can do. You can either get in front of this, start educating the parents in fifth grade, you know, to the dangers of what they're facing, and get teachers, staff, bus drivers, janitors, anybody involved whatsoever to understand the warning signs, warning signs, and intercede, you know? And if you look at what is now being done, you know, with, I forget what the name they call them, but there are people that the district attorney is assigning to, people that have already had overdoses, to be their mentors. I mean, like, it's not an A.A. program. And once again, you know, a lot of kids are not going to buy a twelve-step program, which is everybody's cookie cutter solution. That's not the answer. A lot of kids are just going to turn their heads and not listen. I'm just talking head to a fourteen-year-old. He's not going to listen. He's got to listen to a peer person that's been there, done that. So, let me go on, I'm sorry, I've been a little misshapen here. But I'm sure you would be too if you were standing in my shoes today. Okay, so, you know, what procedures are in place to identify, intervene, potential threats students face with regard to heroin abuse when behavior is displayed? That's a pretty straightforward question. And I will mail this to Walden, I have this all ready to go, you know, so... And you can hear the questions I asked the town council to. And then, who is responsible for keeping our children safe in this school system? Who is that? Who is responsible to make sure that the next eighth grader doesn't get hooked on heroin and doesn't end up dead? Who is that person? I'd like to talk to that person. No answer?
The answer is every single person whom touches a child's life has a responsibility to report and recognize. And I know that, I recall if we've ever had an opportunity to talk or meet, but I would encourage you to come into my office any day this week. And I will share with you not only my personal story, but also professionally, everything that this district, this Board of Education, and school leaders, and teachers, and staff, and counselors have done to combat this incredible, incredible disease. So it's, it's, it's pretty powerful when I think about the work that we have done. And I'm only saddened to know that we haven't provided enough outreach to you so that you knew that we were working. And I'm sorry that you're here sharing this very, very incredible story for us to continue to raise awareness. But I hope that you come to my office, and I would spend as much time as you have so that I can share with you everything that we're doing from the district level and then some of the experiences that I've had personally.
You may regret this, because I have a lot of time. And I'm extremely passionate about this. And this is a United States epidemic. And once again, you need to be on one side or the other of this issue. You need to come out in front and start educating parents to what the warning signs are and the things you have to do, along with cohesive, you know, communication between every other party involved so you can stop it before it starts. That is the answer to heroin addiction. The kid never takes the drug. And because I'm going to tell you, the potency of the heroin that is on the streets today is really, quite honestly, it's like three, four times, and you're an addict. And I just want, I will take you up on that, I will come to talk to you. And, you know, but, you know, I've been sorry for ten years. And the reason I didn't come sooner, right, is I wasn't emotionally ready to come here and address a powerful group like the board. But, you know, when I see other people dying that I knew, that I went fishing with, that I played catch with in my backyard, and I hear the stories of all the other kids that are addicted, and how they got addicted in Lacy, and how they're still using dope in Lacy, right? And how the police department is picking the low-hanging fruit and making it look like there's, we're doing all this. None of it is working. So I would love the opportunity to speak to you about what can be done. And I'm sorry to take up your time, and now they can hammer you about the budget, so... That's all I have to say. Thank you for listening, and thank you for the job you do.
And thank you for standing up in front of the board and sharing your story. And I'm sure if we went around the room tonight, you're not alone in here, so... No, no, we're not going to do that. So thank you for sharing. Yes, I'm sorry. I can see your hand, I just couldn't see you.
My name is Anne Susan Elmer. I live at one 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 five Beach Boulevard in Forkett River. And I just wanted to address my concerns with health care. As I attend this meeting tonight, I find myself completely dumbfounded. I previously spoke at your board meeting approximately one year ago as an active advocate for my son Charlie, as well as for all of our children. At that time, I expressed the utmost importance of continuing to utilize nurses aides in our current school system. A system which is supposed to put the safety and well-being of our children first, well above everything else. I ask you, where did we go wrong? Why are we revisiting and questioning an issue which is a basic fundamental health foundation of our children's needs? As a child, I was always taught that safety comes first. Please let it continue to come first. Don't skip on health care. I know with all of my heart and soul, a nurse who is forced to work alone is not the solution. Not only will it put unnecessary stress on our amazing nurses, but it will also create a major effect for her. I see with my very own eyes, as an employee, a mom, in our schools, the enormous value of children who require medical attention in one form or another. This health assistance is not limited to children being taught in classroom. It starts from the moment our children pull up to school to the moment they leave. I have seen firsthand, our children require immediate medical attention on the bus, in class, during lunch, at recess, on class trips, and lastly, while back on the bus as they depart from school. There is a constant demand of medical attention which needs to be addressed in a swift, calm, professional manner. Our outstanding nurses aides are undeniably essential to this process. They are extremely professional, knowledgeable, and helpful to our children and their parents as well. It is very comforting to our children to know that they are readily, that they are a readily available resource. Our help aides are the professional support we so desperately need to hold on to. They are undeniably, majorly beneficial to all of our schools. Without them, our system would be a gallows. We would indeed be taking one giant step backwards. Dear board members, I beg you, once again, take into account all that I have said. Without our children's health and well-being, we have nothing. Thank you for giving me the opportunity again to speak as an active advocate for our beautiful children, things undeniably deserved to be heard. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Louie Selsey and I live in Monocle Harbor. I am a former graduate of Lacey Township Middle School. I am now currently a sophomore at Donovan Health Care School, which I've been attending for the last two years. I am here to discuss my experiences in Lacey Township's school district. Not only did I have a positive experience of the teachers that I had had when I lived in Lacey, but each one of them has left a tremendous impact on my life. Ms. Antonin, a non-hemorrhage teacher at the time, was my fifth grade teacher, who would always sound white and show that a smile on my face made me the most. I was always told the lessons and never left me to answer questions. Ms. Plino was a strong teacher who had gone both beyond just a teacher, but a true friend of my life at a time when I was in high school years, that I needed that kind of support in school. Mr. Hallo did not deserve a lesson, was our teacher of the year, any better this year. To this day, his lessons taught me in science have always ensured that every child learner in the room comprehended his lessons. Mr. Devonow was an energetic teacher that never let me leave the room without a complete understanding of what he had just taught. Mrs. Glass brought history to life in a group of hands-on lessons that were prepared with genuine love of the subject. And I remember telling my parents that the stories she told were all in her head and were never just needed in a book. Another teacher who I met just several years into her career, who is his brother. I had the pleasure of her teaching for two years. She is still someone so special in my life and I'd like to thank her each other for your stance. These are only a few examples of the incredible teachers I had while I attended Lacey Township School District. All young teachers to the prime of their career and I could not imagine their position was ever in jeopardy. I feel terrible that any teacher who worked so hard each day would ever have to feel threatened as though their career was being threatened. So if I had such a positive experience, why would I have left my high school? Starting my seventh grade year, I had suffered from the school initiative of not being trapped as I was now. Not only did this make all my other classes unproductive, but I found that I tended to zone out on many of the lessons because of the wide range of skills in the room. From a student's perspective, the concept of making everyone learn at the same level only made the honor students' intelligence lack and the struggling students stressed out having to work at a standard that seemed untenable to reach. And even though to an outsider's mind, this problem may have seemed to rest on the shoulder of a teacher, the teachers that I had were doing everything they could do to come up with everyone's learning difficulties. The model of making every student count forgot about me and my hard work. I needed to be in a place that respected who I am as a person and challenged me to learn that I am and continue to grow in an environment that values the importance of discipline. I value the teachers that I had in Lacey and know that I am another person for having known them. I value the journey they did to foster me into the person that I am now. I am thankful to the experience that I had of new teachers that were not cut by a short budget. My wish to the district is that we get back to the place that we adopted the old motto of the district that started with excellence by example. Let us raise the bar of achievement for every student, providing them with teachers that I have been able to benefit the plus and afford it with. I had not decided to go to Donovan Catholic because of the teachers that I had had while I was here. I took another school and employed the policies that I believe allow me to reach my maximum potential. Thank you.
My daughter is seventeen, seventeen months of cycle of order. My daughter was born on August twenty-third, two thousand and eight, and I was so excited for her to be in kindergarten, especially since it was the first time that would be full day. She attended preschool and couldn't please sleep the bus with her baby sister. She had trouble with her speech, which up until this point was pushed off as developmental. The school began speech services for her, but by the end of kindergarten, she was struggling to keep up, because it's not just ABCs, coloring, and numbers anymore. With her speech support, it was thought that she had made great progress and would be okay with first grade. She would have been a perfect candidate for T-one, or maybe even DK, but both programs were cut and there was no longer a kindergarten screening. First grade was a struggle. We worked every night and on weekends on homework and played chronic scenes and enrolled her in forty-five minutes of private speech. I brought her to the Rockers reading program in the summer to boost her for second grade. She qualified for basic skills and is now pulled out for reading and math. She still does speech at school. She attends past forward three days after week, after school a week. We still listen to private speech. She still struggles. These cuts make me nervous because with all the support she has now, she's just getting by and not very confidently. When she comes to Milhan, basic skills support drops drastically. My classes get forty minutes of in-class support once or twice a week if that teacher's available and they have a difficult to substitute. There are no more coaches. There's no more success twenty-one, and it made a huge difference. In Lacey, our population may have dropped, but our pre-introduced lunch eligible students have risen from twenty-one to twenty-eight percent from two thousand and ten until now. In a report by Richard J. Coley at the Educational Testing Service, he shows significant proof that these students score lower consistently. They need more support than our. We're moving backwards with these cuts from what we need in Lacey. We have a harm in that. Yet we're cutting counselors. We have a rising BSI population, yet we're cutting teachers. I've said it before, when Milhan had its counselors, its coaches, our scores made huge gains. It was all taken away and we're struggling with the resources that we currently have. Research shows that some of the direct results of chronic stress on students brought in from conditions typical to a child living in poverty is that absenteeism increases, there's impaired attention and concentration, reduction in memory and creativity, diminished social skills, which means making friends more difficult, reduction in motivation and effort, likely lead to depression. And all of these impacts stress stemming from living in poverty that can be contributed to factors in those lower test scores for schools with higher percentages of these students that qualified for grade three special. As you can see, this already puts our district up against the challenge, but we need the staff and resources to help these students. The needs are changing. An enrollment number is not a tell-all. Yes, there's fewer bodies, but the students we have are needing more. Seven percent more in poverty, two percent more in special ed. And that's just in the last six years. That's two hundred and eighty-eight and eighty-two students on out of respect fully. That doesn't even count the number of students in need of basic skills like my daughter, who's not on free lunch, but misses, I'm sorry, but missed our services due to cuts, with parents that are bracing up every moment to try to catch them on. How do these numbers change things? And how are students can pull through a class with twenty-five? Special ed, only twelve to a class, and the lower grades only six. BSI, you should have help for five to six students in a class. You need more teachers, not less. Cutting these positions is like poisoning our water. A slow illness that spreads over time. Our children need as many adults in their lives as we can provide it, so please find a way.
You can be next.
Mary Maurice, twenty-twelve Brookdale Drive. I want to thank our veterans for their service, because I lived through World War II, the Korean War, the Vietnam War, and I treasure the veterans highly. Thank you for your service. I'm blown away by the tragedy of the heroin and the, the children today that seem to need so very much. I was born in nineteen thirty-one. I lived through the depression. I was eighth of ten children. I was number eight. You just did it. You, you, you pulled out your bootstraps and you did it. And my mother couldn't want to school. I don't understand what's wrong with the, the, the population today, but that's beside the point. The reason I'm up here is to tell you that I'm really not happy with the format of the way you conduct your meetings. And I told you when I first started coming here that I'm here to learn. I'm still learning. But I resent having to come here a month later to make the comment on what you said in the meeting. That's not fair. It loses all its steam. And I don't have the courage to play the meeting again on TV so that I know, I remember to be angry at what transpired.
And that is why we're trying to be very positive tonight and trying not to...
Well, that's, yeah. But I just have to let you know how I feel. Okay? And I feel, based on last month's performance, the ability of the board function has been compromised because there are four conflicted members. And the sad thing was, when I saw two gentlemen make a personal attack on Mrs. DeSanto, that to me was uncalled for. They might disagree with her decision, but you don't make it personal. This is business, not a love affair. Okay? And I believe in tournaments. Sorry. You know, we have, Lacey has a lot of work to do because of all that I've heard here. And we have to take the position we can do it. And, and I live in, in an adult community and trust me, an extra ten dollars a month or whatever on their taxes, those ladies aren't going to make it. And thank you.
Yeah, you're going to have to take the microphone in your hand, unfortunately. Sorry. Thank you.
My name's Heather Pitts. I live on Annapolis Lane. Heather Pitts. I'm a parent. Thank you so much for sharing your story, because I think that really puts into perspective everything that we're trying to do as a community here. And I think that a lot of what the atmosphere of school is has to do with those types of situations that your, your son dealt with. You cannot blame school, you can't blame parents, but things all work together. And the atmosphere at school is, is hard right now for students. And I think a lot of that is the achievement orientation that's the focus. We've lost sight as a nation of focusing on the whole child. And so thank you for sharing that story. That brings up the park, because that's part of this atmosphere of achievement rather than child-centered education. And I hope that the board that will make a resolution to just make a statement to the state that the park is not, it's not embedded, it's not a high school graduation assessment for how the states are going to take a test in eleventh grade, why would you come back your senior year? That makes no sense at all. So, and then having that as the only option in a few years, I just sincerely hope at least seven or eight districts have taken that stand. It, it's nothing up for you. You can copy another district's, see that you agree to it, pass a resolution, make a statement to the state that this is not okay. Because that much focus on one test is part of the problem and part of why students are feeling alienated in their education. And then teachers are forced to focus on that as well, rather than focusing on the whole child. And as a teacher, I am a teacher in another district, I know teachers will make a way to try to focus on the child, but there is too much emphasis on the achievement side of it. So I hope it will pass a resolution against the park to the state. Also related to the atmosphere in education, that brings me to the main thing I wanted to talk about, which is Apex Blended Learning. Blended learning is not new, but it's new to a lot of people. This past Wednesday, the National Education Policy Center released findings from their fourth annual report on virtual and blended learning schools. And the study was done by independent university professors and it compared widely used accountability measures such as the parks across states. And they found that not only were virtual learning schools below traditional school settings, blended learning schools were even further below that in their achievement, with alarming graduation rates of only thirty-seven point four percent. These findings align with other auditors, state auditors, other organizations that reviewed these assessments. And even the Walton Foundation, which is a major component for blended and online learning, found the same results. The National Education Policy Center researchers attribute the continued growth in blended programs to the vigorous advertising campaigns for lobbying and favorable legislation, because obviously it's not program quality. So why on earth are we as a district moving toward blended learning with Apex or any program? And also wanting not only to have it at the high school, but at the middle school level as well? For the cost of thirty thousand dollars or more, when we see the evidence that it is non-beneficial and that traditional instruction has better results. What is the purpose then for Apex or blended learning in general in our district? First, I was told Apex is a First, I was told Apex is a resource or like Khan Academy, and that teachers can use it as supplemental instruction based on a topic or a skill rather than as a full curriculum delivery system like Edgenuity was. Teachers can elect to use Apex as much or as little as they want. And I appreciate Dr. Clark took a lot of time to answer a lot of my questions in this area. And Dr. Clark mentioned even having on the course descriptions for students denoting whether a percent of instruction would come from Apex learning or more or less so that students and parents would be aware of how much of their instruction is coming from an online program. So I have to wonder though, how will a teacher calculate this percentage? And when you think about the fluidity and flexibility of lesson planning, how is that really feasible? Because instruction at the level of high school or any obviously lower levels, but even at high school and middle school should be student-centered, not content-centered. And teachers need to be able to be flexible on their lesson planning, not tied to a certain number of hours or percentage of instruction coming from an online program. I had the opportunity to use the student demo to better understand Apex and their advertisement videos, how to program where students learn by doing rather than passively watching, listening, and responding. But the doing that they refer to is clicking and dragging a plan with a picture of a plan across the screen to a terrarium on the screen. I hardly think that that's hands-on learning. It is interactive media. There's clicking and answering questions, but that's not hands-on. Research using neurological scans has recently shown that interactive media is associated with limited neurological activity. When comparing the actual cerebral blood flow between students engaged in interactive media and repetitive single-digit MAM practice, guess what? The simple MAM practice activated more areas of the left and right frontal lobes than the interactive media that students were using. Probably surprising to you because obviously a blended learning company's not going to tell you that, and this is the latest research. So why then do kids appear to be engaged when they're using interactive media? The sensory input generates a release of dopamine that mimics the sensation of satisfaction that students get when learning through actual exploration. So they feel as though they have accomplished something when they really have not engaged all of their senses in that exploration. Digital learning actually squelches the desire to investigate without creating the complex neurological connections that are created through real-life experiential learning. Apex or any other canned blended learning program does not offer learning by doing, no matter what they say. It's just a marketing scheme. We also need to consider that there are health and safety concerns when using digital technology as a tool for learning. And some technology should be used only for the best and most important and creative parts of instruction, not just for reading content and curriculum delivery. There are twelve nations that have policy in place to limit or ban Wi-Fi at schools. Obviously, we're not limiting or banning our Wi-Fi. However, it's well documented that children, teens, absorb two to four times as much radiation through their eyes, skin, bones, and in the brains of the pancreas and hypothalamus. Microwave radiation, which comes from any wireless device, is a class-two B hostile carbonogen. And safety regulations are outdated and need to be revamped. Most teachers are not aware of this. Most parents are not aware of this. But it's something that as a school district, we have responsibility to know and to utilize technology in a safe and hostile way and to inform our parents. Excessive screen time is leading to digital eye strain, and permanent myopic nearsightedness is at epic proportions in children and youth with redness damage that's caused by the visible radiation of blue light emitted from Wi-Fi devices. Even healthy children have been known to complain of headaches, difficulty concentrating, dizziness, and heart palpitations when exposed to excessive Wi-Fi radiation. As long as the device is on, it's emitting MWR. So if you think about our classrooms, holographic probes, phones, and tablets, students often multitasking several devices at one time, there are all many radiation to our students who are absorbing two to four times as much radiation as we are. So we need to make sure that the use of technology is purposeful and meaningful. Digital technology and Wi-Fi are here to stay. It's a tremendous tool. And I think that this is something that I also discussing hopefully at the Strategic Planning Committee meeting tomorrow, that we do need to have some kind of guidelines for teachers as far as that's concerned. So back to Apex at the cost of thirty thousand dollars or more per year. What is the goal of that as a district? Are we focusing on instructional design, which is the one thing that research has proven will impact learning positively, or are we focusing on content delivery with shiny new programs of little value? Some administrators might say that kids will have to use digital learning at work some days, safety training courses, and so on. I know I complete my local compliance for school and it's terrible. And, you know, honestly, if you never had to complete any of that kind of online training, you know you were not engaged. You were completing it because you had to. And you probably didn't remember most of what you were supposed to be absorbing. Another argument for blended learning might be that we need to teach kids how to use technology, which is a false statement. No matter how advanced we think we are or what shiny programs we have, the next generation will grow up to be even more proficient with the newest technology that becomes available. These kids are more proficient in how to interact with technology than we will ever be. And their children, the next set of kids coming up, will continue to be as well. So what is the advantage of Apex? Dr. Clark also mentioned that Apex can be used as a learning management system that tracks student learning and activity, which I guess means data, tracking data. But how useful is tracking student activity if the program is used by different teachers in different amounts and in different ways? Even data from an isolated lesson is questionable on this program. Who's to say a student is multitasking, randomly clicking, or looking up answers through another resource, which many of the students' parents have told me their children have had to do if you're using this program such as Khan Academy? When I was using the student demo for Algebra One, I guess it was correct on a whole bunch of the questions. So how would the teacher know? And since you aren't showing any work, how will the teacher assess and remediate your errors? If there's no uniform usage of product across classes, teachers, or subjects, administrators will not have valid comparative data to determine if the product is even of value. And if there was uniform usage, you still can account for teacher's skill and knowledge when using a program. I recently was discussing all this with my cousin, Leslie Manyokis. She's a board-served by teacher. She has a master's in education, a PhD in instructional curriculum in the content areas, specialty in literacy. She's co-authored several books, such as Guided Inquiry: Inquiry in the Twenty-First Century, and works as a consultant with educators around the world. And I thought she would have some insight. She explained that her experience as a teacher, effectiveness consultant in various Denver public schools, working with data, they found that much of the data was not aligned using an online program, was not aligned specifically to the school curriculum, and it was a tremendous amount of wasted time with full PD sessions and many prep periods spent analyzing data. That turned out to be useless. I noticed that the Apex demo site had several states listed for standards alignment, but not New Jersey. And our individual curriculum maps would have to align exactly with each course in order to be of true value if data is in fact the goal. Which also leads me to mention that New Jersey is currently updating the standards because of the claim that we no longer have Common Core. We're just actually adding to Common Core and we're adding literacy components to the standards. So I wasn't planning on saying this, but I'll add that. If you are looking at a literacy program, it might be a good idea to wait until those new standards come out because they are definitely updating the literacy standards in New Jersey. So a quote from my cousin, which I thought really ties all this together, and if we really think about this, will help me learning the learning environment for students a more pleasurable place to be. The students will feel more like an individual instead of like a score. So I'm gonna read to you this quote. She said, "I've been working with data-leading school data teams in Denver for the past five years in all kinds of ways. Teachers making up their own formative assessments, using tools like ANET and district uniforms, et cetera. The most useful data teams that I led were in conjunction with high-quality training on understanding by design, where teachers determined the learning goals and backward design lessons out of that to meet the standards. It was PD tied to instructional design grounded in best practice. We made the most gains and we can see measurable growth in student and teachers' collaborative power and professionalism." All of that is about instruction. It's about teacher instruction. It's not about using any resource. It's not about any specific resource. And it's certainly not about a blended learning resource. A much better use of our resources would be professional development that improves and perfects our educators' skills in assessment and lesson planning, differentiated instruction, guided inquiry, and so on, rather than wasting resources and time on a costly, unproven blended learning program. One last comment that I want to leave you with by a Canadian educator and scholar. He says that blended and personalized digital learning do not build for resilient, creative, entrepreneurial, empathetic citizens throughout their linear and mechanical software algorithms. On the contrary, they diminish many opportunities for human relationships to flourish, which is the hallmark of high-quality learning environments.
Any last comments?
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
My name is Jen Ryan. I live at four oh five Pine Tree Drive. I am a registrar, so I was asked by Fort River's Ingersoll Health Services to address the health aid positions. And as a resident, I have data. And I think you'll see that these numbers are related at the New York Health Aid. So in 2014, 2015, school year, the total visits of students down to school nurse was ten thousand two hundred and four. Student medications were eight hundred and fifty-five. Diabetic visits were one thousand seven hundred and fourteen. Two hundred and ninety-five students were sent home ill, and four hundred and ninety-three students received tele screenings. For chart reviews, one hundred and seventy-four children received immunization and computer input about their immunizations, and one hundred and fifty-two students received gym excuses. To date, for 2015, 2016, there were five thousand four hundred and eighty-six students that visited the health office at Fort River School. At the MillCon School for the 1415 school year, the number of students that visited were four thousand seven hundred and forty-six. The school nurse is out of the office at least four times a day. Without these people present, it is four times a day this office will be closed. The number of students who received medication administrations at the MillCon School was one thousand five hundred and seventy-two. The number of diabetic visits was one thousand one hundred and twenty-three. Do you have a patient at your doctor's office that that would be a number for? The number of students sent home were five hundred and eighteen, and the number of input data about their immunizations were between four and five hundred. Gym excuses, four hundred and fifty-one gym excuses. For the 1516 school year, from nine fifteen to three sixteen only, there were four thousand three hundred and fifty-seven visits. The data is not yet available for April and June. And then telephone calls were approximately twenty-seven thousand phone calls that were from students with their health aids. So we see a lot of kids every day. We see a lot of kids that we don't get to help with. Thank you.
Yeah, if you hold it, then we can hear you better.
Okay. My name is Morgan Clancy, and I live on Hemlock Drive in the North River. And I've lived through town for like twenty-four years. And I've come to many of these meetings, but really, this is the first time I've ever got to talk. But I just feel that the taxes in my city are horrendous. I mean, I cannot afford to pay them. I'm still working my age to make tax, to pay my taxes every three months. And I mean, the foreclosures in town are just unbelievable. I mean, I know people that are in senior living. They can't even afford it. And I mean, the taxes last year were sixty-two percent. And now they're going up to sixty-five. I mean, there are people that can't even afford the taxes now, never mind another ten dollars a month. I just think it's horrendous. I really do. Because I mean, so many people have come to me and told me that they have to move. They can't stay in town because of the taxes. I don't know. Something should be done. I don't understand it. It's easy just to say, oh, listen, you know, I guess you people up there can afford it. And I know I can. And I know I'm speaking to so many women that, you know, are widowed and they didn't want to come. It's just a...
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rachel McCollis. I live at eight twenty-five Winton Street in Fort River. And I'm here this evening to be with the Board of Education not to let Alyssa Ayapico go from her position as a preschool teacher. I'm unsure whether her position is at risk, but as a non-tenured teacher, she has no safety net. And I feel that the Board of Education and community need to know what a gem we have in Miss Ayapico. We first met Miss Ayapico in the summer of 2013. It was a rough time for our family. Our son Brody had recently been diagnosed with OCD, anxiety, and sensory integration issues. My husband and I were confused and scared. When his diagnosis came, the disabled preschool program seemed like our best option. I was sick over the thought of putting my four-year-old on a school bus and spending half the day away from him. And then we met Miss Ayapico. As soon as I walked into her classroom during orientation, I felt a wave of calm and peace come over me. It was reassurance that Brody was going to be where he belonged. Miss Ayapico was eager and sweet. The compassion she felt towards these boys and girls she was just meeting was overwhelming. I felt a renewed sense that Brody would be okay even though he would be away from me. When school started, Brody thrived. My husband and I were nervous that his anxiety would get the better of him and his school days would be a disaster. It was the complete opposite. We began to see a side of Brody we had longed for, a happier, more settled little boy who wasn't constantly riled with anxiety. He looked forward to every day that he spent at school and constantly spoke to Miss Ayapico with excitement and adoration. My husband and I were thrilled. Throughout the year... Throughout the year, Miss Ayapico was the epitome of what every parent wants for a teacher. Not only did she engage our son, she helped him to flourish by tailoring her classroom to his needs and the needs of all the students in her class. I would often get personalized notes home about Brody's progress and even received a phone call from Miss Ayapico when Brody had successfully used the bathroom at school, a task we had been working on for months. She literally called me the second she was done with him in the bathroom. She was too excited to even wait till the end of the day because she knew what a milestone it was for Brody. Needless to say, when June rolled around, it was extremely hard to move Brody out of Miss Ayapico's class and into mainstream kindergarten. But it was because of her and all that she did for him that Brody was ready. Kindergarten got off to a rough start for Brody. Something in his environment was setting off his anxiety, and we no longer had a boy who was eager to go to school. Coupled with this, Brody began to have medical issues that required us to pull him out of school on a regular basis. He continued to do well academically, but emotionally, he was a mess. He would come home from school crying most every day, and every morning, it was a fight to get him on the bus. As his mother, it broke my heart to see my son struggling so badly. In March of 2015, Brody's medical issues came to a head, and he spent three days in the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia. It was traumatic for Brody to say the least. After many long discussions with Brody's doctor, it was determined that the best course of treatment was to put Brody on homebound instruction so that we could... Miss Ayapiko was one of the first people I reached out to. I needed her opinion on who was the best fit to come into our home and provide instruction for Brody. I needed, I needed her opinion, because I knew she knew Brody best and would also want the best for him. Within 10 minutes of hitting send on my email to her, my phone was ringing. It was Miss Ayapiko. As soon as she received my email, she went to her supervisor and asked to be Brody's homebound instructor. When she told me that she was giving the go-ahead, I burst into tears. For months, we had been fighting to get Brody back to where he needed to be, where he was in Miss Ayapiko as his teacher, and I was finally seeing light at the end of a very dark tunnel. From March until June, Miss Ayapiko came into our home almost daily. For an hour a day, she did school with Brody. At first, she kept him up to speed with his classes at school, but she quickly discovered that Brody needed more. He wasn't being challenged enough. So she began bringing more challenging work for him, work that she took her own personal time to gather and tailor specifically to Brody. She kept him engaged and eager to learn, just as she had during preschool. If Brody happened to be having a bad day, it was Miss Ayapiko who could pull him out of his breath and get him smiling again. Every day, Miss Ayapiko would teach her two classes of preschool, and then drive to our home and teach her at least another hour with Brody. Some days, she left our home and went to cheerleading practice, and she never once complained. She was happy to be with Brody every day and honored to be his homebound teacher, and it was evident that she loved her preschool classes just as much. Miss Ayapiko wasn't just giving my son classroom instruction, she was building him back up and giving him the confidence that he could go into first grade and be successful. And I can confidently say that because of her efforts, Brody is sailing through first grade. We continue to keep in touch with Miss Ayapiko today, because she has become part of our family. Not once, but twice, Miss Ayapiko came into our lives at a time when things look a bit scary. Because of her compassion and her love for both teaching and her students, Brody is thriving. When I heard that Miss Ayapiko may not be asked back for the 2016, 2017 school year, my heart broke. Not just, I'm sorry. Not just because of the wonderful relationship we built with her, but because I couldn't help but think about all the children who need her. These children have already been given a rough start to life. Some of them are autistic, some of them are struggling with learning disorders, and some of them, like my son Brody, are riddled with anxiety at such a very young age. I also thought about the parents. Parents were terrified to put their babies in school, terrified to watch them drive away on a school bus. Letting Miss Ayapiko go would be doing our community a disservice. She is a gift to these children, and not just anyone can do her job, I'm sorry. The students that come to our classroom are blessed to have her as their teacher, but I know she would tell you otherwise. If Miss Ayapiko were here speaking right now, she would tell you that it is she who is blessed, blessed to know these boys and girls, and blessed to call them, hers for a few short hours every day. I know this because she's spoken these same words to me about my own son. Not just anyone can be a preschool disabled teacher, but Miss Ayapiko can. I am confident that I've given the opportunity to continue teaching in Lacey Township. Miss Ayapiko will always concur hardest to help the students who come through her door both academically and emotionally. She is an irreplaceable commodity to the disabled program and our community, and many parents, not just myself, will be sad to see her go. Thank you for your time. I hope that by sharing our experience, the Board of Education can make the only correct decision to keep Miss Ayapiko where she belongs, in Lacey Township. Thank you.
Now, I think we're in a race for the lines, so. At this time, I'd like Mr. Giordano to say a few words as the line's chairperson.
Thank you, President Downing. You've heard a lot of heart-wrenching stories this evening. You know, you talked about the heroin epidemic. Dr. Anthony mentioned that one is too much. You know, and I think, Heather, you had said something about, you know, this country needs to take stock in, you know, how we're raising our kids and how we're giving our kids. And I think it's, you know, it's important, you know. Education doesn't start in the classroom and end in the classroom, it starts in the home. And collectively, as a community, we need to all work together to, to rise to the occasion and address these challenges. From a financial perspective, this has not been an easy budget. It's been difficult. We've made hard choices. I'm gonna ask that the administration continue to go back and look at the budget, and look at where you're making cuts, and look to see what you can do to save positions. Continue to work at that. I think we need to do a better job, give the kids, to give the kids the best possible education they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Giordano. And I apologize, I didn't see your hand. And Mr. Ryan, I think you're waiting too, so, let's start with Mr. Bidnick. And then Mr. Ryan, and then we'll see who else I missed.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Richard Bidnick. I'd like to speak for the taxpayers who are gonna be crying every time they get their tax bills, and have in the last several years. This is sort of like a reality check. I think I've been speaking at these meetings for quite a while, and this is not unexpected. I was expecting these things to happen, and as you've heard, the superintendent said it's only going to get worse as the future goes on. There's less and less money in the pot, more houses in foreclosure, more houses for sale, I can't get the prices for them. I would like to sell my house, but I'm underwater with my mortgage now, because the housing values keep going down. So I'm kind of like stuck, like a lot of people are. But, a 17% reduction in the student body does require, I mean, any logical business, and school education is a business, whether you like it or not, requires that you be financially prudent with the dollars that you have. I think the school board and the superintendent are trying to address those issues. My main concern here is, I think that some of the teachers who are gonna be let go are the non-tenured teachers, they're not really part of the union contract, and they're probably some of the better teachers that are in the school district right now. And because of the way this relationship with these contracts, you know, they protect the people who've been here a very long time, which is sort of, I just don't approve of that, I think it's terrible. I think that the parents in the school district should demand that the contracts state that there is a performance review and evaluation of every teacher, and that there are no raises given unless the performance evaluations are tied to student achievement. I think that the teachers should want that for themselves, because it would actually show their progress, it would help them be able to be better teachers. I think that this is all really important. Remember, we are here for the children, not the adults, and that is very, very important to remember. Now, I have a couple of questions dealing with this board, and actually with the LTA. Did you have the exact cost of this contract and its prices in front of you when you all voted for this contract? Did you honestly have the costs of what the increases are gonna be, and how many employees were going to have to be let go, before each and every one of you sat and voted? Did you have that information?
The board numbers. Yes.
The exact number of employees?
The board's.
So, the exact number of employees?
We get a number, and that number is what we determine, can we fund the guy, can we not fund the guy? Once we determine that, we can fund the guy, that's what we go off of. How the union distributes money and what they do with it, that's their prerogative.
How they distribute money?
Correct.
You mean taxpayers' money?
Correct.
Okay. How much are these raises?
Can I stop you for a minute? Because if you looked at what the union vote was to ratify the contract, it was probably the most overwhelming vote they've had ever.
Right, I'll guess that. I know, I know about that, I'm sorry. How much are these raises going to cost the taxpayers? And please, if you don't know the answer to this question, how could you vote on so much?
So, the people in the room, and I know what you're trying to do, you're trying to say that the increase in the salary is what's causing the tax issue, and it's not. It's a confluence of events, right? If you look at healthcare costs.
Right.
If you look at the cost of special education, all right? If you look at the cost of transportation going up, the cost of vocational school going up, there's a confluence of events that's contributing to this.
I understand that. I have the memorandum of agreement sitting here in front of me. In year one, there is a 2% increase. In year two, there is a 2.9% increase, plus a 1% increase for, I guess it's not the teachers, ESP, whatever that is, I guess that's the parental professionals, etc. And the third year, it's 3.15%, plus a 1% extra increase for the support staff, excuse me, that's what that stands for. I also want to stand in here about the health insurance. You kind of left that open after July, that that would be negotiated and the costs would be split. What does that mean?
We have the opportunity to shop the health benefits program to equal or better, so we can possibly get a better price for benefits.
Okay, so, now, a question that comes up with this is, I looked at the inflationary rate from 2009 through currently to 2016. The average inflation rate, now, we're talking about, this is because of living increases, because I can't imagine giving increases without performance evaluations. So it would be cost of living increases, so we're talking about, if the average is 1.3% over the last seven years, you're giving over the cost of inflation. In fact, it looks like it's almost 8 or 9% over the next two or three years, which is way beyond cost of inflation. Also, what are the givebacks in this contract? What are the givebacks that the union has negotiated, or you've negotiated on our behalf, the taxpayers, for the increases in salary that you're willing to?
I believe the ability to shop the healthcare is a huge giveback, right? We hadn't had that before.
Well, does that mean that you could actually be somewhat creative with the union and allow the employees, give them a stipend, and they can shop and buy their own on the health exchanges? Why wouldn't you want to do that? I mean, that would actually make more sense. Everybody would get the same amount of money, and they can buy their insurance according to whatever their needs are, their particular needs are. That would be more logical in the union, you know? I would think if they really care about saving money and doing things better, some people may not want to have some of the higher insurance costs, and they may want to not spend that money quite that way. It would give people the opportunity to be more flexible with how that money is actually spent. That's a creative way of, you know, shopping around for the health insurance. I know that, I've heard that the teachers' union is like bound by marriage, by the state health contract, but there are other ways, and you know, you have to realize that there's gonna be more and more positions year after year that are gonna be cut, because the healthcare cost at 16% increase is just not sustainable. It just isn't. These are things that are gonna have to be addressed. Now, my question to the LTA is, and this is to the people who actually negotiated the contract. You obviously were aware, when the contracts were being negotiated, that positions were going to have to be cut, because there wasn't enough money in it. So, I saw the last meeting on tape, Mr. Ryan get up there, try to beg the school board not to have to cut positions from the current school, the next coming up school year. You know, if you knew that this was going to be the case, why did you go for these higher increases that you were asking for? I mean, it's about taking care of your brethren, right? And I have an ideal solution. Maybe the school board would be able to keep those employees if you forsaken your raises. Well, I mean, but there isn't any money here.
Please, Mr. Bidnick, just please make your comment. Ladies and gentlemen, please keep your comments.
Okay.
Just make your comments.
All right, so, my question is that that's something else to like think about. I mean, you know, if you're gonna be worried about the other employees in the school losing their jobs, then that's another creative way of, of taking care of this situation. Mr. Giordano, you negotiated this contract, you were the lead negotiator for the taxpayers, am I correct then?
Mrs. DeSantis.
That's correct, and Mrs. DeSantis.
But you were the lead negotiator, am I not mistaken?
Two people signed the letter of surrender.
Answer my question, please.
I'll answer it. I will answer that question. I assigned Mr. Giordano and Mrs. DeSantis to be on the negotiating team. That was the negotiating team.
Okay.
The voting power, he tried, he didn't vote, and brought him back.
Okay, but there was one person, was the spokesperson, correct?
There was one person.
Correct. All right. Right, I understand, I understand. I've dealt with unions, I know how this all works. Okay, now, the other question I have is, Mr. Giordano, you're not a taxpayer, like, you don't own property in this town, do you?
At the current time, no, I don't.
And you don't have any children?
I play plenty of taxes, I think.
Okay, but at this time, you're not a taxpayer, correct?
That's correct.
And you don't have any children in our school district, is that correct?
If you don't, that's your personal information, you don't want to share.
I have no problem sharing information. I shared it when I ran for office and now I'm not.
I understand that, so.
So make your points.
My point is that I have a problem as a taxpayer, because when I get my taxes, I'm gonna be crying about them, okay? And the thing is, because I'm on unlimited income, and the thing is, is... The thing is, is that I find it, it seems a little odd to me, that the one person who's sitting on this body, who doesn't have really a vested interest on how much the costs are gonna go up, are...
Are you saying I don't have a vested interest?
Well, my feeling is that you don't have what I call a vested interest as far as being, your taxes aren't gonna be directly affected. That's what I mean. When the tax bill comes, you're not getting a tax bill from the Lacey, the Lacey Township with the school taxes. That's my point that I'm trying to make, so.
My parents live here on fixed income, my sister lives here, her kids go to school here. And then I grew up here, I've been living here for 42 years, so I think I have a vested interest.
Okay. I understand, I understand, I really got the fortune in your pocket directly. But, the issue I have with all of this is, and I don't understand what kind of games it seems are being played. I mean, it's like, we went through this last year, serious reductions are going to have to be made. I don't know if the union is gonna be willing to come back to the school board and say, we'll give up some of our, our increases so we can keep some of our brethren, or they're not going to. If they, if they really care about the children, as they say they do, and these are really probably some of the better teachers that are gonna be let go, it sounds like a really good thing to do, if we really care about taking care of all of these people. I'm sorry for the teachers, the younger teachers in particular, who may be in our school district, who probably are some of the better teachers, because they have to be evaluated every year before they get to tenure, and they're probably working their butts off. I salute all of you people, because I know how it is to start out at the bottom, have to work your way up. And I don't know what the resolution's going to be to all of this, but you have a dollar amount that you can work with, you can't really raise it anymore, so I don't know how you can figure out to keep, keep going more, unless there's some givebacks from the union. Thank you very much.
Mr. Ryan?
I stand up here tonight to address the Board of Ed and the Lacey Township Committee at large. This district is currently proposing a budget that would see record cuts to its teachers' support staff. I'm here to plead with the board not to allow this to happen, but rather look elsewhere to make the cuts. I know the board is in a tough situation financially, and there are many contributors to these factors, such as not going to the cap previous years, unfunding state mandates, lower generated tax revenue, and the list goes on and on. I know the current Board of Ed is somewhat newer than the older board, with quite a few members, less than four to five years of experience, but what needs to be made clear is that every year that the district fails to go to cap, it significantly damages the future of this district. I know it's a balancing act between fiscal responsibility and helping progress in our district. I understand that many of our town residents are on a fixed income, and are on a pension, and receive no cost of living adjustments. My own widow and mother deals with the same situation, and I try my best to help her out where and when I can. So believe me when I say, any of those comments do not fall on deaf ears. But what I also need the Board of Ed and the town to realize is that the normal household cost of living increases more than 2%. To hold a school district under that and expect to continue to improve is unrealistic. The Board of Ed started a strategic planning committee over a year ago, which gave the opportunity for parents, teachers, alumni, and members of the community at large to come together and work on a plan to help the district move forward, allowing everyone to have a voice and take ownership. Unfortunately, many of the ideas that were presented picked up money without funding of the... of the proposals, those visions could not take place. With regards to funding, I'd like to address some rumors floating around that the economic shortcomings is due to a recent negotiated contract that was settled late December. The current contract that was negotiated was at a rate of 2% for year one, 2.9% for year two, and 3.15% for year three. These numbers are not earth-shattering by any means, they are fair and reasonable. Considering that Lacy ranks third lowest in the county, only above Waretown Lakewood, as of today, new information shows that we are second to last, only over Lakewood, and Waretown is on top of us. We currently rank 565th out of 647 districts in the state of Jersey. Another thing to note is that the certified teaching staff, which Mr. Vindick was referring to, did give up part of their allocated money to self-fund the support staff guy. They also took money out of their tuition, and also to fill that sorely and grossly underpaid support staff. Now, let's address the medical. Every month, I hear a member of the board discuss how much the board contributed to benefits for the previous month. What they fail to mention is that the members have contributed millions of dollars toward their benefits to date as well. Not only is it costing members thousands yearly, it increases every September and every January, for those of you keeping track, that's twice a year. Another thing to note is that we continue to contribute at the highest tier, which is tier four, for all three years of this contract. The average person pays between 6% to 8% of their salary, so when you see a 3.15 raise, it's not all it appears to be, now is it? Let's not forget that LTEA did take a salary raise in 2009, to help the financial troubles of this district, which cost its members thousands of dollars, which financially, they will never recover from. It was during that time I watched this district turn on itself. I did not like what was happening, or even the environment that it had created. Believe it or not, that's what prompted me to get involved in the association. And I'm here to tell you, ladies and gentlemen, that environment around here is turning into a negative one. It's become toxic. Administrators can be here arguing and shouting at one another, not because they don't like each other, but because they are fighting on behalf of their dedicated staff members. As any building principal, if they feel they truly have enough staff to meet the needs of their student population, I guarantee it to you, I must know. Now, they're going to be told to do it with less staff. That's why they were arguing with each other. I've even heard one staff member to, "What's going on right now is the Hunger Games." While I find it very admirable, and even honorable, that the administrators are fighting on behalf of their staff, it makes me question, is this really what needs to be, or should be, happening in this district? Shouldn't they have the staff they need to meet the needs of our students? I've heard some members of the public say that those are lucky they have jobs. Really? Really? I don't in any way, shape, or form find it lucky. I've worked my tail off to get where I am. Four years of college to earn my degree, another two years for my masters, as well as every year, take courses and classes to enhance my skills as an educator. There's nothing likely about it, and I am not alone in this. This can be said for many of my colleagues in this district as well. The teachers and support staff in this district constantly sacrifice their time to go above and beyond what is required then for their student's success. I'll leave you with one final thought. Think back to your own personal school experience. What in your mind stands out? Was it a textbook? Was it a computer you used? Or was it an impact that a teacher or staff member made on your life? You as the board have the opportunity to make Lacy schools great again. Don't our kids deserve it? Thank you.
My name is Sean Keller, Easy Street, North Florida. The first thing I want to say is that... Yeah. I'm addressing the public. I want the... We'll see this vote. So, I come up here and I say that first and foremost, it's for the kids. I know that's why you guys did what you did, elected, and you're here to help, you know, and that's what the teachers are here for too. But you don't come up here and say that, and then all you do is fault it by your taxes. It's disgusting. It's not about taxes. This town is one of the lowest rated in the state, okay? It's one of the best towns to be in, as sensible as things are right now. I can tell you, just like Mr. Giordano, I've been here my whole life. It's a good town. Tough times, and I'm telling you what will come out of it. When it comes to teachers, they personally affected my son for the past seven years, excuse me, eight years, that my son's been in the school system. There isn't a day before the fight, I remember the story that comes from that. Something possible. Just thinking about bad-germed teachers, it's not right. Get a little upset, because it is upsetting. I have another son that has A.A.H. data, and he has very difficult days. But if it wasn't for the teachers in this town, he wouldn't be where he is. He's a B student in fourth grade, and it's because of the teachers in this town. And I have an older son, who's an honor student in seventh grade. And he just got high honors for the SEC Teach Testing, that he just did with John Hopkins Pilot Organized Career. And it's because of teachers here. So first of all, thank the teachers, because I couldn't do what you do for my sons. And I really appreciate it. And I thank you guys for doing what you do, getting elected, because I know you care. You come out of the league, you care, and you want to do this for the town, and you have all right intentions. And this is a tough time, but I can tell you, as tough as it is, and I know whatever the outcome is, it's still going to be tough on our boy together to die. I'm asking you guys to do whatever you can to do the right thing. I'm happy to pay for you. It's just town needs, whether it's the issues for parents, we're just educating our kids. We really need it. And I know dollars always at the end of the day win, when you make a decision, but for the sake of our town, we really need this. We can't lose our teachers. I just want to say one more thing. We spoke a few minutes ago about the nurses, the statistics, the stats, everything, anyway. You're forgetting about the 65,000 noses flown, the 30,000 hugs, the 2 million, it's going to be OKs, where how many times come up with stories that, you know, why your mother or father doesn't answer your phone, and you're trying to make your kid feel better, and you're in the nurse's office all day? I mean, those things don't come up when you're cutting budgets. And, you know, personally, for me, my mom worked for the school system for 28 years as a nurse's aide, and how many times I made connections with kids just because I was Mrs. Kelly's son? How many times I didn't get beat up because I was Mrs. Kelly's son? And Jackie, you know him, right? But it's the truth, because they were there, and they did a thankless job, and they did it because they cared, and they really worked for kids. And I know at the end of the day, again, dollars always win, but these people that are in those positions, with their staff, or the security position they have to let go, they're so important. They're people that make just as much impact in our kids' lives as the teachers. We can't lose any of them. And if we have to lose any of them, it's really going to be tragic. So again, I want to tell you, and I apologize, I'm addressing important record, but it's really important that we do whatever we can to do the best we can for our kids. And I'm telling you right now, I have two personal stories, like I told you, where it's been a lot of success here. As bad as the negative things you hear about systems derating, all this nonsense, my kids are doing it. And, you know, in both, two different ways, for opposite. My one kid, it's a tough day every day, but it's because of Lacy that they're doing okay. So thank you. Sean Keller.
Thank you, sorry.
All right, thank you.
Karen Warren, 17, New Way. I am a parent of a former student in Lacy, who was well-educated and went on, but a very fine, college-led institutional institution has graduated. I pay taxes, it's the right thing to do, but I'm up here tonight because I see a lot of ugly tonight, and there's something that happened that was inside here that was so important. And I want to preface it by reading a quote from the National Math and Science Initiative, and it says, "Of the 20 fastest-growing careers, 15 of them require a background in math or science." And what I want to talk about tonight, just briefly, is our STEM program, especially at middle school and the high school, that participated in the Sea Purge program. And Sea Purge is near and dear to my heart, because it was started by Nate Lakers, when they partnered with Lacy as partners in the beginning of the STEM program. And Sea Purge is a robotics competition that is initially held, why? And if the kids are good enough, and smart enough, they can move on and compete with the other good enough and smart enough kids. And while we're being pulled this year, and I'm going to read this, last Saturday, John Kuzan, John Satero, John Kuzan is one of my son's favorite teachers, took their students to Rowan University and created the underword of robotics competition called Sea Purge. The competition was hosted by Rowan University and sponsored by Lakers Enable Base. Over the past several months, students in STEM class and students in the after-school robotics club have worked feverishly to build their concept designs. They competed at home themselves to see who would represent LTHS in the competition, and Lacy entered four teams. Two teams were in the stock competition, and two were in the open class. Low and behold, the students' hard work paid off, with a third place finish in the stock class, which was a team comprised of Adrian Cunningham and Cassandra Shen. And in the open class, Lacy High School took first and second place. First and second place. And the first-place team was Daniel Reed, Jess Fordoski, Michael Tuana, and Joseph Natty. And in second place was Colin Neely. What I'm up here tonight is, and I have no vested interest in this, is that I found that they can move on to Louisiana State University for the Nationals, and it costs money. And what we're here to talk about tonight is the lack of money. But it shouldn't be the lack of excellence. Shouldn't be the lack of excellence. So right now, in Way, the Leryr Fund this group, is they're doing a crowdfunding campaign. And if people would care to donate to it, I believe it's the, oh, sorry, it's the 2016 National Sea Purge Competition. They're working so hard to get there, when they already worked so hard to get there. And we as a district need to support them. And so tonight, I'm just up here to say that this is the good stuff. This is the stuff that makes it all worthwhile. The John Kuzans and the John Sateros of the world, the Melissa Iapico's of the world. So when we get up here and we start fighting over who should pay what, who should pay this, it's about the kids. It's really about the kids. Thank you.
Please remember your name in the office. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Andrea Murphy. I live at 24 Bridgemont Drive in Lenoka Harbor. I've lived here for three years. I have a son that's a freshman, and I have a son that's in fifth grade, and we have been so blessed, I can't even begin to tell you without crying. I could go on and on and on about all the programs that have touched my son's lives, from the chess program to the accelerated math program, but the program I want to talk about that's near and dear to my heart is the choir program at the high school. I'd like to recognize the music program. My sons have been blessed to be part of the music program. We have the gift of music in our house. My youngest son has been to three concerts in the last week because of you. Thank you for that and for that gift of music. I am here to speak about the wonderful educators, but one teacher stands out and continues to make my oldest son's life awesome. Ms. Stephanie Fale goes over and above. Her choir program is second to none, and I know you recognize that, because I was here when they sang for you at the board meeting just a few months ago. She not only has given my son the confidence to sing a solo at the concert, but also has given him passion. He has been in chorus since he was in third grade, but this year has made the difference for him. In the morning, when he leaves me on a Wednesday, he will say, "Today is the day for passion." Because often, he'll see Ms. Fale during the day, and then he gets to sell pizza with her to raise money for their field trip, and then he gets to come back at night and sing and make his day full of passion. So what I ask is that you recognize these programs and recognize the goodness that Ms. Fale has given, not only my family, but Lacy Township High School. She is one that deserves the recognition. I pray that she will continue to be here, so that when my youngest son gets here, he also will have those days full of passion. Thank you so much for your time, and all the outreach you have provided.
Good evening, Captain Gensmally, 344 North Avenue Drive. I'll make you quick, send this lead. First of all, I'm also very upset about the fact that some teachers may be let go. I am a teacher, not a district, so I know and appreciate how hard the teachers work. And I, my sons have had some phenomenal teachers throughout their career, uh, throughout their school education, and I really do appreciate. So I'm hoping that administration and the board find a way to save the teachers' positions. I'm here to speak about the school safety officer that might, I know we have two right now, and now maybe we do two, one. I work in another district, and I go to work every day feeling secure, knowing my children are saving their schools. And I know that having the two officers, and I know they rotate, I mean, one rotates around, one usually in high school, and it makes me feel very secure knowing that. And I just hope that maybe the board can find a way not to leave the one officer, because I feel like you need one in every building, personally. I know that we practice drills and all that in the schools, and the kids all know what to do, but there's nothing like having a officer there, not only to protect the students and the staff, but also to be a role model there, to talk to the kids, to have a good rapport with them. So I'm hoping that, you know, for safety reasons, that we consider that a part of the budget, and also, of course, all the teachers and the nurses' aid, and all the other staff who might be let go. Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Carrie Sutter, and I have two orders in Lacy Schools. I also want to address the upcoming teacher cuts. As a parent, I believe I speak for many when I say that these jobs matter to us. Class size matters to us and our children, and that these eliminations not just take away the jobs, but kill amazing educators that these children listen to and have at. I also have so much to say about Ms. Iapico. In one short year, she took my word from not being able to speak to any adult... In one short year, she took my word of honor from not being able to speak to any adult to openly engaging in everyone's presence as she comes around. And also being able to not write down any letters, writing her full name. She is now ready for kindergarten. Thank you to Miss Iapico. Beyond normal teaching duties, I have watched that young lady go out on Saturday mornings and volunteer her time to raise money for the program for these children. I have watched her give each child the attention that they serve sleeping in the golden childhood room. It is because of her that these children who are at disadvantage already really learn to love school at a young age. My older daughter, Lenoka Harbor's daughter, she also advocates for the dedicated teachers that work hard to help every child, although their classes just don't seem to be small enough. I cannot imagine what the class of growth to learn others as a result of culture cuts. Just this past weekend, we saw Ms. Everett, kindergarten teacher of non-tenure at Lenoka Harbor, and my lawyer said, "Oh, Mom, we call her Miss Awesome. This is coming from a first grader who never had Ms. Everett, but knows her because of how involved and wonderful she is with these children." I just wanted to beg you to please consider every other option you have before leaving these people, not the positions of people who affect children of this township.
My name is Stuart McKenzie. I'd just like to, you can hear all these great stories about all the different teachers here. I would just like to reiterate one point that Mike Bryant said. According to the Department of Education in New Jersey, this school year, 2015-2016, and considering the median teacher salary in each district out of 674, 647 districts, Lacy is 565th. That puts Lacy in the bottom thirteen percent of the state of New Jersey. And we hear, I'm sure anyplace you go this week, you're going to see superintendents hand wringing about budgets. But if there's 564 districts in New Jersey better paying than Lacy, something's been wrong over the years. In this district? You, out of the ten K to twelve districts in Ocean County, you're number nine, Lakewood's number 10. And if anybody in this place still reads the newspaper every night, you'll understand what a screwed-up mess the finance of Lakewood is. Central Region, 163rd out of the state. That puts Central Regional 402 places above Lacy Township. Something's wrong, and it's got to be fixed. Now, I understand there might be an element in the area that thinks thirteen places, thirteen percent is too high. But I'm sure most of you should be embarrassed by that, please. Thanks.
Good evening, Police Law, 228 Golden Hall Drive, Lenoka Harbor. I'm here as a parent this evening, although I am a teacher in district. And I would like to first and foremost say that I never appreciated the members of the staff that I work with until I was enrolled in my master's program several years ago. And they encouraged us to walk the halls. And I always felt I was so lucky to be a science teacher because we obviously teach the best subject ever. But as I walk the halls, I listen to my colleagues share their lessons with the same passion that I feel for Lenoka. So it was I opening, to say the least. I had planned on a huge discussion this evening, however, this late hour, I will keep it brief. My eldest child is currently at the University of Lenoka and had to write a personal statement while applying to med school. Several of her teachers were mentioned. However, Mrs. Schleyhan just left. She was one of the first teachers who interested my child in the idea of surgery, which is actually what she's pursuing. And then after that, Ms. Frisch, who's still on the back. One of our veteran teachers, who still holds just as much warrant as our non-tenured teachers, challenged my daughter because she was in the wrong level of math. And rather than taking that as a setback, Sarah forged forward and Ms. Frisch encouraged her and was the first teacher to ever tell her that she was intelligent. She also wrote about her and her statement, and she went on to earn a four on her AP exam. The other teacher was Ms. York, who also influenced Sarah. And she sailed right into chemistry and has never turned back. As far as my son goes, very little is said by him. However, Mr. Iapico was the one who encouraged him to try volleyball to increase his vertical. So thanks to Mr. Iapico, we are doing volleyball year-round. So it's not just the academic areas that encourage a child. We just encourage his confidence. And I do actually get a little dialogue at dinner. And my middle one, Carly, she has been so influenced by the teachers in our district, from kindergarten to the junior, to the junior that she is now. She was our unsung hero this evening. Is pursuing education as her career. And one of the teachers that has impacted them greatly this year is Mrs. Tom Leslie, who's been with them for a very short amount of time. And they were in the midst of having already two math teachers this year. And rather than stepping into her role and taking over the schedule she already had, she opted to put the children first, which actually impacted both of my children, taking over the Alfred II honors and their pre-calc honors classes. And have military confidence back up again when they were faltering. So to her, I owe a big thank you. So I really just wanted to speak on behalf of my sophomore's mom. And I just wanted to say that if you hurt one member of our community, we're a family, and families go through tough times. And if you hurt one of us, you hurt all of us. Thank you.
Seeing none, I want to thank everyone for their comments. Thank you for the majority of being positive and polite. I appreciate that. And at this time, we're going to make board comments, and I'll start to my fore and left. This is the sense of, would you start, please?
Congratulations to our students of Lenoka, Lucas, Jamie, Christina, and unsung hero volleyball. Four exemplary students. Thanks for all you do. For the public's knowledge, the benefits of this month was $1,129,966.95. This figure is on page 38 of the agenda. The payroll on this particular report is $4,040,583.70. And this month, we have to make our annual payment to the public employee's retirement system for pensions. That was $874,772. We also have fixed payments for our two outstanding bonds for fiscal year 1617, totaling $3,859,550. This number is what it is, and there's nothing the district can do to change it, unfortunately. I want to thank Mr. George for completing a major transaction. We have refinancing of the now $17.9 million bond. It was completed on April 1st. It was some savings, but not enough. The strategic planning meeting on March 22nd. Thank you to all the community and staff participants. And the next meeting will be tomorrow night, Tuesday, April 26th at 6:00 p.m. on Ice4. The Forkin River School drama presentation on March 23rd was so much more than I expected. Keep up the great work. It was a fantastic show. A senior parent night was held on Wednesday, April 6th at 6:00 p.m. If you weren't able to get to the meeting, all the information is available online. Please check the website. On Thursday, April 7th, there was a wings evening contest fundraiser for ADELE. The contestants had a great time. We thank the Rotary Club and Mrs. McIlroy for their assistance at this event. Friday night, April 8th, was special Olympics spring dance at the high school. Over 100 participants had a wonderful evening out. Thank you to all the teachers, the high school PTA, and the donors of gifts that made this night possible. The high school spring play, The Mystery of Edinburgh Drew. It was like watching a Broadway show. The students are unsurpassed in their expertise of performing on stage. Great show. I want to thank Lenoka Harbor School for the invite to their Earth Day, Arbor Day celebration, honoring Mrs. Mansell retiring this June, Mrs. Snarber, who retired last year, and Mrs. Manuel, who also recently retired. It was a lovely event and a new treeless planet to honor our school. Tonight, we are forced to say goodbye and good luck to Mr. Hanshu as he retires on May 1st. He will be greatly missed. The Sea Purge trip to Baton Rouge for the STEM ROV Team National Competition. Yes, we are all aware of the importance of this trip as a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for these students. And we are doing all in our power to make this trip happen. It is in progress. The public hearing on this new budget will be held next Monday night, May 2nd at 6:00 p.m., I believe, Mr. George? 7:00 p.m. Thank you. So if people wish to come out again, the budget will not be passed until next Monday. The next board business meeting will be held on May 16th in this auditorium honoring the teachers of the year. Please be sure to join us for this special celebration. And thank you to the public and all who made their voices heard tonight. It is very important for us to hear everyone. Thank you for coming.
Good evening. I'll be quick. I'm a teacher. I have to get up at 5:00 in the morning. So, Mr. McKenzie, I don't know you and I'm not usually negative, but I invite you to run for the Board of Ed. You seem to know so much. And there's three open spots, so...
We've been trying for years.
You seem to, you seem to know a lot what's going on and what you're doing wrong. So put your petition in by July 25th. Mr. Hanshu, it's been a pleasure. I followed you all through middle school and high school. So we've been together a long time. It's been a pleasure, and I will see you in the Toms River in the booth. Mr. William, I appreciate you coming up. And I assure you, Dr. Anthony will talk to you. And many of us are on the municipal alliance here. Many of us are on the task force. And we are doing all we can to combat drugs. I have one spotlight of students tonight. Our valedictorian, I can't talk to them, so I'm sorry. Our valedictorian from last year, Kip Hopper. He just got the freshman award for outstanding academic achievement by a freshman in the School of Health Sciences. So our valedictorian from last year is going on. He's doing great things. And that's all. I really can't talk anywhere. Thank you.
You guys know we all have a whole lot to say very often. I just want to say, you know, thank you for the people that did come up and speak positively about school. Unfortunately, it takes a vent like this for people to come up and say those sorts of things. I would say feel free to come every week and talk about our regular local teachers. I think they work hard. If we had the money to be able to pay them as much as they're worth, we'd keep everybody. Unfortunately, that's not the way things are. Mr. Hanshu, thank you very much for your time. Good luck with everything else you do. I don't know what else I can talk about, but maybe, maybe I don't know.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody that's left with us. Everybody here for going to this and saying you for staying. You know what, Mr. Kelly? He got up here and said a lot of good things. And the reason I ran for Board of Ed was because I know there's a lot of good things happening in town. I know, and we don't harp on it enough how good things are. Our unsung hero, Students of the Month, great job. The STEM program and the Sea Purge competition, phenomenal. I just want to say that, and the proud boys, the veterans, honoring the veterans. There's a great thing going on. There's always going to be some negative stuff in town, in every town. And we can tend to dwell on that, or we can lift ourselves up and talk about the great things that are happening in this town. I was informed, I want to say it was last week, that we had a student accepted to United States Air Force Academy. Okay? That's phenomenal, that one of our students is going to go to Boulder, Colorado, I believe it is, and was accepted into the Air Force Academy. And I think now we've got someone in every military service academy. That was the last one in Lacy's students. And that was, I want to say his name, Chad Walsh? Brendan Walsh, I'm sorry. I don't know where Chad from. I'll make this brief. I'm sorry if I ran one on. I just want to tell Mr. Hanshu, I don't know you at all very well, but I love coming here and watching students on interviews. Maybe we can get one of you being interviewed before you leave. And maybe you can interview yourself, and we'll do a little side-by-side thing there with the computer. Other than that, Mrs. Martin, thanks for bringing up the STEM program and the Sea Purge competition. And I believe that's all I have to say. And again, thanks for staying. I appreciate it.
All right, so as Mr. Zalani just mentioned, thank you for everyone that's still with us. You heard a lot of things tonight. And I'll start out by want to thank Lucas, Jamie, Christian, and Carly for your efforts in performing and being role models for your valedictorian classmates. I have a long list of things here, but I don't know how much I want to get into. But, you know, Mr. Bidneck, you know, you question taxes. For me personally, you questioned about having kids in the school district. And I guess the best way for me to answer this is when my son, who's 13, asks me, "Hey Dad, why are you going to school where they're nice?" And I tell him it's an honor to be a public servant, to give back to your community, to be a role model for him. Teachers in this district, it's a teacher in this district that encouraged me to be in the IT field. I get up tomorrow morning at 6:00 to take a flight to Buffalo. And I'll be in Toronto until Thursday. I travel every week. So doing this is quite an effort for me. I do it because I love kids, so with that, I'll just end my comments.
Kimmy Sharp, it's late, 10:25, and most of what I'm going to say has already been said. But I forget what's Mrs. Martin, but the next person that came up really said something that touched me, which was, you know, this town is a family. And if you hurt one of us, you hurt all of us. And that really resonated with me. And I want to make sure that you understand that that's how we feel as well. We're a part of this community. We have children in the schools. We have friends that work in the schools. And making these decisions is incredibly hard, incredibly emotional. You're seeing the result of months of fights and arguments and discussions. And, you know, I'm not going to say crying, but there's plenty of emotion that goes into this. And at the end of the day, we can only do so much with what we have. And we try to make the best possible decision we can. And I just want to make sure you understand that this does not come lightly for us. And I guess that's it, really. That will conclude my comments.
Thank you. And last but not least, I want to congratulate all the Students of the Month. And yes, congratulations to Brendan Walsh, who was our first recipient, our first U.S. Air Force Academy recipient. And I also would like to congratulate, I had to get his name, David Woodruff, who attended the Unsung Hero Award Ceremony down in the Frog Pond Elementary School in LaLay. Mr. Hanshu was there, and his mom, and his teacher, and his aide. And it was a very touching ceremony. Students from all over the county are nominated for this honor. And some of the stories you sit there, you definitely need to bring tissues with you because some of the stories are just heart-wrenching. But he was a delight. He was so proud to be up there. So I want to congratulate him for accepting the Unsung Hero Award. I also want to thank the veterans that were here tonight. Mr. Snyder doesn't want to...
Mr. Snyder does a wonderful job, um, every year, working with our teachers, his daughter, the other teachers, putting on that, uh, Veterans Assembly. It's another very touching, if you ever, next November, try to come because it's wonderful. And Mr. Hanshu, we're gonna miss you. You have been a real asset to this school. Um, we wish you a lot of luck in your retirement and I hope you do a better job than I did with retirement. And I hope you enjoy that book of yours and enjoy it. Congratulations. At this time, let's move on to new business, please. Okay, can I have a motion, please? Page 42, items A through I. Donna McAvoy. Ms. Giannana. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sallette, yes. Log. Yes, center three. Down.
Yes.
Here now?
Yes.
Did well?
Yes.
Down.
Yes, I'm voting yes on all and item C, I'm voting yes because this is just to research. I'm not voting on doing it, we're just researching it, so yes. Okay, page 44, item two, donations. Dr. Anthony already read these, so can I have a motion, please, to accept these donations? Mr. Bidwell? Roll call, please.
Mr. Sallette, yes. Log. Yes. Center.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Giannana, yes. Thank you. Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Did well? Yes.
Yes, and on behalf of the entire Board of Education, we thank all the people who donated. Item three, Reverend Susan Crickum, could I have a motion, please?
Move.
Donna? Roll call?
Mr. Sallette, yes. Log. Yes. Center. Ms. Giannana, yes. Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Did well? Yes.
Yes. Item four, professional days, can I have a motion?
Move.
Roll call?
Mr. Sallette, yes. Log.
Yes.
Center. Ms. Giannana?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Did well? Yes.
Yes, item five, student matter, I have a motion.
The motion is amended. The fifth line, which says, "Appropriate 504 plan acceptable to the board to return the students to the regular school program, etc."
Could I have a motion as amended?
Move it.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Sallette, yes. Log.
Yes.
Center. Ms. Giannana?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Did well? Yes. Down.
Yes, item six, certified personnel, items A through I, can I have a motion, please?
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Sallette, yes. Log. Yes. Center. Ms. Giannana?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes, and I just wanted to make special notice of the Wells' retirement and the people who've all been of your service throughout all the years.
Mr. Didwell?
Yes.
Down.
Yes. Are there any additional items to be added? No? Could I have a motion then to adjourn the adjournment? Adjourned, thank you. All in favor? Oppose, meaning adjourn.